Hi, Brian.
I did notice they have civil services showing up now, which they had in the past, but go, it was called off, we've only two town and eighteen and two staff members came and it's quite impressive building, but we also realized coming back that marrying Fairfax and not marrying apples to apples. Then they did another tour for two other court members and a couple of other people that were in town, whatever, some salesmen, whatever. I made arrangements today, I talked to the center of city and we're going to, we're at Center Point, I'm sorry. They've done an addition in the past ten years, we're hoping to be able to go up there and just kind of see how they did. So, any questions for me?
Thank you. Fire department is Brian.
Uh, Redford Assistant Chief. Uh, so, so last month they calmed down as far as frequency of calls, which has been nice. Uh, we did our annual hazmat recertification for the fire department. And we just got done doing our first round of CPR recertification, which is an annual thing. I think they've got another one or two times set up for the members and EJ is looking to set something up for the community to offer um CPR instruction here to the public. So I think he's working on something and we'll get some information out on that. And uh, we're starting to get things changed over to summertime stuff. So some of the stuff that was set up for winter changed over for summertime use, or that it's gonna stay there. Anything for us?
Thank you. Maintenance line?
The Miller made this department. Um, so far it's been in the, well, weather's over, they're starting to get ready for spring. Uh, hopefully it's over, right? But so we're starting to put away some of our still equipment, getting kind of seen up and prep for next year. Um, also started to fix some of the smoke cloud damage, but we've done it in the right way, it's still in place. So of course, we'll probably be getting the seeding here for that two weeks depending on weather. Um, but I'll fix some of the clavings or wing them in the van or fade them for places going down here and there. And we had a fun week so far this week. We've got the squash pad shade covered paws. That was quite the ordeal. Bill hasn't even heard about that yet. He does today, yesterday. They're up, hopefully it'll stay. Anything for us?
Congratulations on the, yeah, yeah. We'll tell you how we did.
On our wastewater, Kevin.
Kevin, Spazl water wastewater. Well, um, since last Thursday, the water system's been impressionable. The water tower should now service now is intentionally to prepare for this all to make sure that system has no hiccups. Cause when the tower's out of service, maybe it'll be sixty, eighty to probably. So it'll be running on the lucid stations. So we periodically do this just to verify that there are no glitches, if the system works right. And the, basically the water system, nobody knows the difference if we're on tower or pressure mode, seamless transition. So the other thing that we did wastewater plant, I want to thank Brian Dallas and Francis, they put their heads together and figured out a way to change them variants and rehab that clarifier wastewater plant. They got it all back, put together, all the pieces replaced and back in service. So they did a little nice job on that. And the last thing, you know, last month we paid a bill for the Johnson County investigation on the Solari aquifer. Well, we found out a little more information today. Johnson County hired USGS to do the survey. What it entails is not the cities using the water, it's all the private developments going on in Johnson County that are trying to tap into the Solari well with private falls. So Johnson County is trying to tell them they can't do that, but they don't want to tell them to do that. So they hired the government to tell them not to do that. If that makes any sense. So in turn, this is going to come up, be a good thing for us, I believe. It's going to help protect the city's investment into the aquifer and eliminate all the um private high-end developments Johnson County definitely do that. So.
Have they tried to get ahold of anybody within Lynn County or the state?
Lynn County and Johnson County are part of the survey. So everybody in Johnson, Lynn are in that survey.
So basically the goal is give the feds to tell private development in the corridor to keep their fingers out of the.
Kind of like Swisher, they voted down and they were going to try to tap into the Solari. And still that new development out there, they may try to do it privately, a private water system. And that's what we're trying to stop. Since Cedar Rapids, Madison City and Coralville are so close, they just wanted to tap into that and use them services. But uh, some of the terrain in Johnson County, that makes it hard to happen. So Johnson County's trying to figure out a way to tell them they can't do the same one. So they just passed it by. That's the information we heard from um the engineer firm that's working on their new water plant.
Thanks, Jeff.
Sure.
Turk and Rex, Joe.
Joe Calparks, our director. Uh, Cynthia will pull my report up. We've had a chance to read it, depending what he has, any questions? The only addition I would have is registration sub date are of course three fifty now.
You have Easter.
Your Easter egg. That's, yeah, that's on there. Easter egg dash is on four one. We'll have a water turned on at the parks uh, before that. Before that. That's all available to the.
Did you have a job fair, I think, earlier this month?
I did a job fair earlier this month. Tina went with me. It was uh, was successful. Um, I don't think we got really anything out of it, other than putting our word out there, we made some contact with Marion Parks and Rec about our girls', uh, high school softball team. And uh, we made some contacts with the Iowa Workhorse Development that I'll follow up with for additional um conversations about our part-time year-round position. We also have a, another one on April fourth at Prairie. They have a, I wish I could remember the name of it, but it's, it's during um conference night and uh, they've given us a table set up and uh, talk to the parents and students as they come by and that sort of thing. So hopefully we'll grab some seniors that are graduating waiting and uh, maybe be able to take some more applications. We do have one application for that uh, year-round position right now. Just looking for some money. Any other questions? A little awkward question sounds, I appreciate the engagement.
Thanks, Joe. Interviewing Jane and Don. Do you guys have anything for this right now?
Whatever. Chris was sick today. That's why he's not here.
Our building, um, person got sick today.
But he didn't have his.
It should affect anything that you have on the agenda.
We sound.
But I mean, I can just.
I asked.
Yeah, I need to agree with everything that's on there. So we didn't have any to disagree with. So there's no reason for it to be called, I guess. Discussion possible motion concerning wine disease run walk on June third.
Tina said, that's me.
Tina Rose fans. Um, I'm putting together a Wednesday five K run walk for lion disease. I have a girlfriend and her, she was a girl that had it pretty bad. And then there is a lady in town here that also has one. She's gonna, she's actually one of my volunteers. It's the same route that the Lions Club will be using three weeks later because USA being the only difference is I was on one page of the, in the same without. Um, all the monies that are raised from it will go to help educate um, as well as help patients who cannot afford their treatments because treatment for lion disease is a horrible and scary experience. I am sending out response letters to victims. Um, there's three different levels for sponsors. And then I'm also sending a letter to everybody that's on the route so that they know what's happening. And on people that's going to buy and not going to have a good health home display. I'm not going to hook up any roads. I would like to um, right up front here where the base it is, was up front, walk that off from people like at the gym or whatever, they'd go that way. They can go to call the staff and instead, we're not going to use that except for when we're back. And then maybe at the drive up here where they would go that way, they would just go around in that way. But that would be, that would be seven to eight, because they start at eight o'clock. So probably by eight thirty, they'd all be gone and walking and running. So we don't, yeah. And all of this has been done on my own time and I won't talk about it.
Usually for the Lions Club, you can make a motion.
Is there a motion?
No. Wait, is this pro or against?
First and second, we're all.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you. We'll see your resolution to the city's potential insurance renewal.
Charlie Garland, Wilson High Insurance, been in Iowa representing Continental Western City Insurance. Uh, Cynthia will put up the renewal figures and I know just like anyone else, first thing they do, they go to that bottom line, like the large increase number between previous year, which for the last year to this year is sixteen thousand six hundred. So I, I sent out a little bit of information, there was some requests of what the city has done in the past year, adding uh, some of the things were taken away. I will just touch on the three to four biggest ones that are uh, influencing renewal premiums, which the largest one is in the property. That one was an increase of eleven thousand dollars over the previous year. But we increased building value by one point four million. Uh, the building cost, uh, labor rates are, the city is under a blanket, which means every building has a hundred percent replacement cost. Values throughout the city, we have to be within ninety percent of what it costs to rebuild. As that goes up, that goes up, that's one factor. The other factor is the cost, the rate per thousand for that coverage. Went from one point nine five thousand to two point three eight. Factors in there are uh, the frequency of these storms nowadays, uh, claims comes into factor of that, and then the company just taking breaks. So that is the largest part, that sixteen thousand. The next one's going to be the liability. That came in about six thousand dollars higher than the previous year. But the, there's two factors that are really influencing that. One is the, the railroad project fiber optics, is that right? And.
Water.
Railroad was requiring all the uh, additional liability requirements.
That's for the, the water cross.
Okay, water, I'm sorry. Uh, that's two thousand of that six thousand increase. The other two thousand, if you notice down below, uh, the public officials and errors and emissions coverage, there, there was a charge for it last year. This year it's included in the liability. So that's another two thousand of that uh, increase. So the, the general liability uh, enterprise completed action only went up nineteen hundred. So the next, the next large increase is the auto, which is seventeen, almost eighteen hundred. That's just in the vehicle changes, adding newer vehicles, replacing older ones. Uh, and then the, the fourth one would be your commercial umbrella. And that raise was because after the last year's meeting here, we took the umbrella, it was five million per occurrence, five million area. We moved it to five million, eight million. So that was that four, five hundred dollar increase there. And actually it was more, but there was a reduction in that cranky. So all in all, and then the fire department down on the bottom, they have a six hundred and seven dollar increase. And that's just because they bought a new TV. So all in all, in the whole thing, the, the property is what's the big driver on this. Any questions? I kind of went through it a little fast, but you gotta, it's your business agenda. You got a busy evening.
I guess my question, the last time you did a general review of other insurance companies that had tried to do it as best apples to apples, I think Charlie, you represent another insurance company?
Yep. Yeah, four years, it was four years ago. And I expressed in my email that uh, we are going to get competitive quotes next year from EMC, Providence, and Triangle Travelers. So we'll have three proposals before I come to leave to present them. Cause I represent them all. Right? So I can, yeah, I can get one, the others, the other, and I can, a little background, I insure on the city. We have six cities that we insure. We have some EMC, we have some Continental. So I know that they're both right in the same boat, but there's some things that Continental does a little better than EMC and vice versa. One main thing for the city Fairfax is the fire department doing the detonation of fireworks. EMC will not cover that. Travelers, Chubb, none of them today. So go away from Continental Western, EMC, you'll have to get a separate policy for that liability. And you know, and EMC will have to endorse onto the spec paper part of it also. I, I know a little bit about the two, but I will make sure when I get them, they will be as close to apples to apples as you possibly get because I have a current policy. And I have access to other companies with you guys, I would rest, you know, if you have knowledge of another one that you'd like to run through or certainly.
Obviously insurance goes up for everybody from one year to the next. It makes sense because first when I saw it, it's sixteen percent increase for the premium totals, I, I was kind of bugged out obviously. But having that information to know a lot of this because of the newer equipment and the property is, is key.
Correct.
You said you work with other cities. How is Fairfax compared to those other cities as far as an insurance rating?
Well, it's hard to go because cities make other changes, you know, they're adding more and everything. But for the general rate, so I'm saying that, that rate of a thousand or a percentage increase on the liability, anything like that. For Fairfax, you guys is presenting to a policy without endorsements is one of the lowest.
One of the lowest. That's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but they're all not good. I mean, they're all in that twenty-five percent to eighteen percent. There's not one that has been below eighteen percent. And I don't see that getting any better coming into a hard market. But in the past, we did, we already looked through, we, we changed deductibles. We did our, the things that we could to help offset the, the premium increase. Talking of Lynn, Cynthia, and I don't see anything here that would be, really be beneficial for uh, Fairfax to change. I wouldn't go over ten thousand dollar deductible. I, you know, I leave everything basically just the same. I wouldn't cut coverage anywhere. The replacement cost of what you want, you have to have that. And if you look at it from the previous year too, it was almost the same. From twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, it was about sixteen thousand, almost exactly this. I did also attach the, the loss claims with issue passable to see where the losses are, which that's in that factor also.
One of the increases, I've seen in Alabama and here, but that's, that's large one because of where it all is, but just giving the order that it gets to here. We tried to compare those, maybe in different one senior maybe. I don't know if that's possible.
It's, it's getting, it's getting the companies that get the quotes out to get, you know, the renewal. So like, the hurdle is, is try to get the renewal policy out soon enough to get their, their renewal total compared against new companies you're trying to get the quotes from. So you have the same coverage. Maybe talk about that. Yeah. A lot of times it's almost better to quote the previous year. So could already have all that information and then just see where they would set if they had the cities last year. And then go forward as we do. Cause they can give us a little bit of time after the April one bill.
Oh, to make adjustments when.
Correct. Oh, yes. On the property side of the increase, everybody said, what storm ratio, it's twenty oh twenty and everything, you know, that we have no control of that wire. They, well, in Iowa, it's become the freaks. That's why they're doing the adjustments. The new model, okay, all of them.
Robert Musso, motion for second.
Yeah. I'll take your message.
Well, I know, like, if you look at the four years in years and it's doubled, it's the, I mean, that's what, right, he's like.
Right. If you look at each previous year from twenty-two to twenty-three, it's actually the lowest percentage increase of all the years. From twenty to twenty-one, it's forty something. Twenty-one to twenty-two is twenty-three-ish. And twenty-two to twenty-three is weak. And part of that is we required more carpet. We've also rotated out older equipment, new stuff costs more than sure. I mean, I loathe to have money, but I also understand the reality. If we want to do quotes next year, I definitely am all for that. There's certain insurance companies that I wouldn't cross the street to spit on, fear on a fire. But uh, I'll make that list.
Just play it off, do it anyway. Cause I want, it's time and it's need to take a look.
Oh, the ones you listed, I have no strong opinion whether they are.
But if there is another one, someone, if someone had to email, if you have any mail, you know, just to send it, I can submit it.
I will motion.
Hey.
Hi.
Hi.
I just want to put buck seventeen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you for your partnership.
Discussion possible motion will turn in quotes for video and audio equipment for the city hall. All right. Oh, yeah. My last, if you want. Uh, is, is any other reps here for the polls?
Change. Audio specials. Hello, I'm John, we just want to be on and off the grid, I know we've. We submitted a proposal to uh, put some infrastructure in for this room and uh, basically mobile media solution to uh, provide microphones and reinforcement for the council.
So there, as they expect, their phones twenty-six three.
Can you kind of lay out what, you know, what would be where and what it can do, what it can do and what's a little better any?
So, so the, the proposal is broken up into basically two parts. One is for infrastructure for the room. So uh, the audio visual equipment that's in the, in the rack there, uh, and the distribution to the speakers, uh, that's the one part. So it's uh, new speakers and then touchscreen audio, touchscreen uh, interface, uh, through the Qsys uh, what am I going to say? Qsys platform. So you have a touchscreen access of microphones and uh, various inputs uh, for the room, uh, floor mic inputs and uh, Bluetooth input and uh, aux input for community users who would use the room for, you know, activities or things. And then the portable system that would be for these meetings, uh, has a video switcher, uh, that would uh, provide for the live streaming, uh, microphones, uh, tabletop microphones with a mute switch for all the council members and the mayor. So they can be heard through the system because that system integrates with the infrastructure. And uh, yeah, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Uh, that's the, you know, the thirty-page document.
So it's four mics, you said?
Uh, eight microphones. So it'd be one, one for each council member and the clerk and the mayor. And then a replacement microphone for this left turn that all goes through the system and all goes through the, the UPA group.
So when someone speaks, residents, whoever's opinion would be able to.
Absolutely. That is, that is the, the main goal that we're trying to address in this.
And then live stream and then recording it for future uses?
Absolutely. That is all, all well within that, uh, capabilities of this system proposal.
And then also there'd be a hook up on the wall. The like renters, if they want to have the DJ?
Yeah, there would be four, four XLR inputs and uh, Bluetooth and uh, uh, aux jack built into the wall that interfaces with the system. Uh, there was also two uh, wireless microphones that were built in the system for community users to be able to plug in. They, it's all accessible on the touchscreen. So they can't get in and mess with the settings and everything. Messing up for the nice people to use it, just can, you know, be reset every time.
And your initial cost, is there any monthly or yearly fees after that?
No monthly or yearly fees after that. Um, in the, uh, there's a kind of a cost analysis over time, you know, as it, but then wears out as, you know, microphone cables get stepped on or broken or those kind of things. Uh, kind of tried to project out ten years, whatever it costs. So uh, first couple of years, this is like a hundred and fifty dollars on the screen, uh, hundred to a hundred and fifty, like to three hundred dollars. And then I kind of extrapolated that over ten years for, if my eyes are good, enough thirty thousand more hours. Uh, just to, to maintain the system and keep it, keep it functional.
It's really, for most part, it's a one-time fee, no monthly yearly fees. Something great, just understanding.
Absolutely. It's, it's meant to be a turnkey solution.
Warranty or additional help assistance with?
That is available. Uh, one of the services we provide is one year after commissioning, we provide three service calls. Uh, and you can use those however you want. We need to retune the system, you know, something's not sounding quite right, or you know, anything needs a warranty, you can use those visits however you want, including training, you know, to learn how to use the video or the audio or, you know, kind of get deeper in it. That's, that's up to you, how those visits are used. Um, all the equipment comes with uh, the manufacturer's warranty for us. And then all of our work is guaranteed for uh, early.
Do you have a paradigm one and a paradigm two? What's the difference? Uh.
Oh, one, two's like, one, one's the building materials. And uh, yeah, so that shows the, the cost of everything individually. I don't like to say, you know, one audio system, thirty thousand dollars, we don't ever know what all that entails. Uh, and then pretty two is just a, a project proposal.
Is anybody here from either of the other companies? Um, Sound Concepts is the same company that's probably years ago, it's within a code. All three of them in the mouth and view the areas. I will point out this audio engineering does not include the video camera hardware. It's just the laptop that you have in hand.
And one of them recommend first said it was not meant for meetings and there was a live stream or it's all, it could basically be like after. Meetings and there was a live stream or it's all it could basically be like after.
Well, we getting the hookup to a podcast that July's there. Their uh input just and correct me if I'm wrong, their input just needs to go into that podcast.
Nice, I'll share.
Yeah, I think, you know, I know their proposal is a lot more expensive, but I think. It's often like. Professional system.
You're talking which one?
Well, um. You know, the sound concepts is just ninety seven hundred. Um audio is eighteen thousand, doesn't even have the video like video camera stuff.
Sound concept for ninety seven, nine thousand nine seven nine to five and the next. Roll down the next video which is eighteen eighty forty days for like twenty thousand.
All the channels.
Sound house that's worth.
And so if you can see that, you know, thirteen eight for just the video part. So the audio was already eighteen and didn't happen. The video that we leave and we're in the same.
Figure out if there's any monthly yearly charges with.
None of them talked to me about that, but then. We do take in about. You know, it's not a whole year, right? About twenty thousand dollars in rentals for a year. And you know, initially we brought all new tables and some new chairs. But we really haven't upgraded any of them. The cat was down. Panels and maybe six stuff and oh well, yeah, perfect, but we didn't.
Two um two of all the seats you put in stop, what is your install of like would be deciding move forward?
Once once an order is in, it's kind of up to the manufacturer. We're looking probably six to eight weeks generally speaking. Uh for most things, um power amplifiers and things like that seem to be taking a little bit longer. From from most of what I've seen lately, most of the stuff would be readily available, but it's too backward um. But it's just kind of where things are at, what manufacturers have maybe at a different time. Uh installation uh probably is given up for a week. It could probably be done in three days, but. Make sure to have a fire told.
I'm all for having recordings for. City council meetings that we have to be something for a number of reasons. One, having something that we can call back on, we can put it back. Figure out, I think we had. A discussion, two degrees, we even did a little about years back or something this stuff. We wasn't sure what our intention was. I think even more importantly, I think getting. Citizen involvement. Everybody's on social media, everybody's is on their phones and appears all the time. Think the chances of getting more community involved and I think would be there. Is it a lot? Who knows, but it'd be something putting options out there for the citizens to get. Have more knowledge on what's going on. If they want to refer back to something. Here it is. I think that's huge. Kate, I think you're out of the.
Yeah.
What did they all talk about?
Um, you know, it's good to get your message out there. Uh you know, people were out, you know, social media. I mean, I. Ely has theirs on social media, uh live streams, uh their council meetings. Um. It's good that we project our message out there and then instead of, you know, somebody. Um simply just taking and recording our meetings and conveniently heading editing them to spend message ads. You know, that they want or not what we were talking about. Um. And it's just, you know, a lot of people are just, you know, they don't want to come to meetings. They can just load it up on their computer. And just watch, you know, the meeting and be able to, you know, like you said, interact that way. That's what we need to. Need to march forward to do this. Yes, it costs money, but you know it. You know, moving forward costs money.
What do you think our lifespan was system would be for the limited use that we have? Because it's not when we use like all.
Sure, I. I would say no less than ten years.
And is it such that you can get replacement parts from the system?
Yeah, everything is everything, yeah. Everything is everything is currently currently in production and there's no no signs that it's going to be discontinued. Or we won't be able to get replacement parts anytime soon.
Are all the microphones wired or are they wireless?
Uh all the all the council microphones will be wired. There will be two wireless microphones that are part of the system. Uh but uh with the way it interfaces with everything, the council mics will be wired.
Are you planning on using the four boxes or?
Uh there's a there's a rolling rack that folds out into a table, so all the equipment will be in that rack. And then the meetings will come out, check log gets set up for the for the camera. And then uh from the rack, the microphones will be distributed out through the through the chairs. And then it's a two network cables and a HDMI cable that run over to and they put in the wall. And that's how that system interfaces with the other systems. It's a matter of three cables.
We talked about putting the where those go on that wall as possible.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be.
True.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And then also if remember it's not only the video is the live stream, but it's improved into the audio and here just people in the room. Or for renters too, and so that will be on the long back there. So if anyone. Have a DJ at the end of the room or whatever, that that would be probably important.
So in our agenda, we've got forty one bullet points on tonight's agenda. Is it able to tag? Each bullet point to where let's say I want to refer back to something for this meeting and I'll hit. Bullet point number.
Our song, our meeting song, like I said.
We'll do that?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's why we went.
Mr. Watanik has been taking these for free and putting them on YouTube. You know how many views have been garnered by two months of streaming? Let's take guess, guess, just take yes. How many views? Give me numbers, somebody shoot it out.
Six.
Close, but way off.
Two.
A hundred and thirty five and thirty five of those were my friends going, my God, that is so boring. How can you do that once a month? And I'm not knocking on them. I appreciate them coming out and I'm gonna beat a dead horse. I don't think it's giving you some money. We have it done for free. He basically posts the raw footage. It's live sometime. I don't remember if he's on the slide or not. And people are gonna, I mean, oh God, someone didn't even know the mayor resigned. On one of the facial uh facial good God, social Facebook pages. They had no idea the mayor resigned. They're like, oh, when did that happen? No clue. And live streaming isn't going to help that. Especially for that cost. Who cried? I did. Oh, thank you. I just don't see it as a good use of money. I think if we had a larger audience or bigger demand for it, I could do that. But the amount of. Citizens who take an active involvement while appreciated is very small.
Do you know what this means? You know, what it means is.
He leaves his zoom, but they have cameras over. Has it on live video?
These owls, I think.
Well, I mean, walking in Washington, but there's weird changes for tiny.
I know people just uses a phone, but I know it's poor quality. Um it isn't. Connected to their agenda and not making any changes to their building sounds system, you know, things and.
How many times have we talked about Dairy Queen in the restaurant next to it? And after. Logically and carefully laying out why it's not open, you know, people on social media say, this is what the recording. Why didn't the city want anybody to get in the building? Why aren't you letting Dairy Queen open? You're not going to convince some people. I could go in, write it fancy cursive and explain it all in detail for hours on end. I'll come back the same as. Why aren't you doing that? Because I don't like that. Or I do want that, then I think you're just.
How long is this pricing been for? You need to kind of cogitate them if you want.
Sure, I'll call on her in thirty days.
So like till our next meeting?
Yeah.
So if I were to. Put a motion out there, then that takes off and bring. If it fails, say someone would probably, you know, would ask.
Yeah, we can we can stay here, not take that as now, we can. If you call it out, it will have to be a big part to back on.
I'll admit it is a lot of money. I mean, I'll agree on about the twenty thousand. I don't know if the other two have regular fee.
We said on like the software that we've already, because we don't we don't have it yet. Well, I thought we were gonna have to spend three thousand right there to do it, but it was fifty. For the current year and then it'll be incorporated in our um upgrade. And I believe that by five hundred, I think what they called it was what our new annual would be. I thought it was. That was the amount just at the. So I think it's about five hundred. Just give one stuff to the be to to link it. The box pass and then the uh agenda.
I'm not sure about it. Obviously, it is everywhere you tell I'm for. But I don't have enough information, sound concepts and audio which year you make the decision. Which one is the best for parrot?
Well, audio engineering will not give up.
They're the ones that don't do okay.
Right, they're the ones that said it would not.
Your peers paradigm has every feedback we would. Be interested in or as part of what my thoughts. Not with some concepts, so please. Ask them to come to next meeting. If Jonathan's as these. This offer all for thirty days.
Our next meeting, Jonathan's. Oh, uh it goes up.
Yeah, so it's the key word.
I guess Philip, we should make your interview and ask that if you need to do one more. When it got wrong, this is like over there. Don't join that many. For buying the camera.
I I get I get his point. I totally get wanting to have on record come back to.
I do too. I just don't.
But at the same time, like. Fifteen years from now, if you go back today, you know what I'm gonna say? I was thinking that day unless it's something major, like a major point, like if we're discussing something. Banal or like, I don't know. I'd rather remember what I.
I agree one hundred percent that it needs to be recorded so that things can't be misconstrued and. And go back and actually know what was said. Just for our own protection and protection of the systems, I really feel like that's. But I don't know if this is the right. I don't think we're to this point yet, I guess. I think there's other things that we could maybe do that would be.
Sure.
Good starting point, but I don't know that without making, I just feel like I need to make some calls and find out what some of the people are doing. What do you guys? Dan?
Just really quick. First of all, just uh we heard it a couple of times. As long as the video is out on YouTube, anyone can take that. It's like the same way they want to re-upload it somewhere else. So just because. Whatever system's recording to know that. So it's not going to stop anyone from putting out a message out there, just FYI. But is there a package that you guys offer that's a little less? Because I think part of the problem with this room, one, the wifi stinks. That's why it's not live streaming. It drops out all the time. So. I record it, I upload it later because wifi is horrible. Clearly, there needs to be a microphone, so I don't know if we need six, eight, or however many you had in there. I don't know if you need a a rack per se, just maybe something that's simpler, that represents a computer that has a nice camera. Some, you know, daisy chain microphones, um probably realign the room too, so people aren't speaking with their backs. To the room. But is there a a package you have that's simpler, at least to get off the ground to kind of start?
Yeah, there 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 is some some places that we can make some make some uh cuts, maybe not the right work, but some some adjustments. Or some uh. A bit of lesser quality uh that might still be able to accomplish what we want to accomplish. You know, take out some of the like some of the sparkly features that are we're building. Uh to try to create a little bit.
So. Uh just so you know, like. As far as like the cost stuff for for this quote, at least uh as far as what the uh. If if adjustments started being made, just so you know what the cost benefit of that is. Uh what you're gonna end up losing uh. Either way, you know, depending on what you're looking for, but what you're gonna end up losing is you could cost out is the turnkey user friendliness side of it. So the the further down the line you go into. The cost reduction side, what's gonna happen is you're gonna have to maybe, or it's gonna be less. Easy for someone to just walk up and use it without. Changing something that's gonna affect the next person and then. What ends up happening with systems like that, in my experience at least, and I see this a lot around churches and similar rooms like this, is that. You'll end up with, sometimes you'll end up with a system that you think is broken, but what's happened is that a lot of misinformed people over. That over time have done things to it or used it and or misused it and then ended up. Uh. Lost in the in the technical stuff where so uh. Yeah, we but it does work for a lot of people, but just just so you know, like in terms of what you're losing or gaining on the cost side. Yes, uh of some of the extra, this what Jonathan described as sparkly stuff is usually. Turnkey uh always works kind of stuff that uh we can give them a make it so that anyone can use it without a whole lot of instruction without. Doing things to it that will make it not work next time.
Cindy, I have a question about Dan's phone, what he records city council meeting. Does this phone become city property?
I do want an upgrade so you can have it.
He's city property. Do you mean open to open.
Open records, yeah.
Granted, granted, good point. See if we can find something a little less expensive. And find something that can be earned easy and all growth.
Well, I mean, I feel like there, you know, like part of this is essentially that's. We can use the room, make a carryout and and we have speakers and. So that's like we're talking just readings happening in mass like. So I just feel like that's more so that's something that is a lead. Is that something that? Is a benefit to to having that in this room?
Yeah.
I mean, because I can tell you some of the people that I know that sit in the back of meetings, they can hear. I mean, just because the sound sucks in this room and I don't feel like yelling.
Yeah, but any, so if you rent for medical people and have a DJ and you can stream music and. These things, it's in status of a benefit than what you're.
Yeah, that's not.
Some of those kinds of things.
That's not, so.
Well, but you have to remember. The annual sale. Rental fees on zones pay for almost the whole thing, which right off. Back. I mean, that's just tax money. That's relevant kind of from the space that you're making a sandwich booth. So. You know, have we invested in other things for renters other than the tables and few chairs? No, that and we've been here since sixteen.
Later on down the shed open up. Right outside here.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah, but the structural stuff is not, you know, they don't see that. They affected some structures. Do you want to just take my, I'm sure the table this till it's not, I just feel like we're not in place to make a decision. This point.
Make your table and if they can bring another less expensive option, I mean, a sound. You can bring. Or if you ask them to do that, which we ask them, or give them guideline on what we specifically want. If we want to make it less city improved, then we need to tell them what we don't want. Or what we're looking like, I don't want to just spend a lot of time putting all these options together and then they come back and their days go, actually. I'm willing to bring this one down, or some of that. The absurd things like eight microphones, I probably agree with that, because that gives five council members, the mayor, the clerk, and them, you know, the. Citizens, audience, I would probably agree with that, but there's other things. If you're looking to make it multi-use, ask some, why spend some more, it's such a limited use. Bones feature in Little Council, increase it. I, I vote yes, if it goes on a big karaoke for city council members, it's a lot of child support issues.
And we've had some businesses that use, you know, I mean, Pandora. Offered them a codeine or anything, you know. Happy to stand. So if we have those features, we'll increase everyone's.
That's one, maybe, potentially.
And twenty grand a year moves that, we move, we make it move right.
One of the things, like for our end of point, have to be the tracks for reading. If we get too difficult, crews have to get set up. Somebody comes down to use it, come and set the call on something they need to get fixed. And that's closely technically the callback for us to have the ability to get it sent back.
I think you're in your reference to a star check, it's perfect, it's a fact, the whole scenario, letting citizens use it. That might be a lay down.
They don't, they don't get use of the tower. Yeah, they just, they just use the outlets.
It's a possible one for that, I mean, it's fine.
Yeah. I know, I was at the Jones family's, you know, this morning and I had a big huge TV string and then a light big camera and it's. And it, but it was a simple, and I should have asked what they were doing, if I had continued that call, so. That's very. So did you, do you give them input as far as like, thank you for that?
My answer is no, so you guys provide. I'm a provider. My suggestion would be live streaming. For the able to view it a second time, so it's all showing.
They're not quite, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's all.
It just did.
Um, just microphones, eight microphones, um, can we reuse these speakers? You know, use what we already. Wait, wasn't here, he's down.
Take the.
Uh, you've got like a, a home audio receiver in there. And then there's a distribution from that, it goes to this, these six speakers. So it's not really gonna be possible to reuse that with, you know, professional microphone system. Uh, but we can, we can scale back on the community use side of it and save, save some there and then. Yeah, okay, that's another thing, so a little, try to keep some of the usability, that's why you should tell them, make it easy and fail safe. And. Not, not as community accessible.
Yeah. Are those things we can always add later?
Absolutely, yeah.
Let's, let's try them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does anybody ask them a question? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your time.
Consider resolution regarding park fees.
The park fee increases that I'm proposing are specifically to better field in the complex. Uh, currently twenty five dollars is what it takes to rent the field for a practice, suggesting thirty dollars. Uh, thirty five dollars if we drag, basis of suggesting forty, and then per game goes from fifty until two sixty. Now, those are for ones using toolsies, the con, the, uh, uh, weekend tournaments remain the same. Any questions?
Let's just set up real stuff to do with, don't wire anything like that.
This only has to do with field.
Any discussion? On the motion. One second. Okay, I'll sign it. Roll call please.
Aye, aye. Some flavor.
Consider portions given through. He's solid, raised. Consider motion, please, we start the greetings.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. It was in the newsletter.
I can't believe all the people that watched it, the YouTube videos.
I'll make a motion for this.
One second.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Do you want to, you consider this spending rules or do you want to look up?
The G.
Aye, one second.
That's what's.
It's a, I honestly, if we receive no comments, I gotta see a point, drag and sap. Motion does suspend the rules, please find a reason, second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Consider motion to apply on passage and adopt for risk death board, and we're ready. Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Consider ordinance eight four, and then amending the perfect code, where is it, two thousand thirteen, city of Fairview, I don't know, chapter twenty three parks. Will be vacationed or. Through motions, introduce, we approve the first, we need the board in state four.
So the changes in this are specifically, and are you on ordinance twenty four or twenty three, yours?
Uh, we're on eighty.
Okay, so anyways, section twenty three oh two, originally, um, specifically talked about. The beginning of this board and how the, uh, the terms were. Two people had two years, one person had three years, two people had one year. We removed that because we're now a board. It's been around for a while, so we just talked about the term of office for three year return, or for members. And then, uh, two of the responsibilities and duties under twenty three oh six. Uh, the board shall choose annually its first, at its first regular meeting. We added, or as soon as possible, one of its members to act as chairperson, vice chairperson, and then, uh, secretary. We also, uh, amended, the secretary had fifteen days to supply the minutes. And when we were meeting on the third, Thursday of the month, that worked okay. However, the timing when we moved to the second Thursday of the month has become problematic. And, uh, with the secretary's, um, consent and with the board. We're gonna change that down to two business days after the meeting. She has to have the, or they have to have the meetings until city hall. And those are the changes. Any questions?
Uh, twenty three oh four compensation.
Uh, the compensation, I don't think that changed, we, that was always gonna be a. Yeah, but I, I think when I was in your office, Cynthia, I was doing that blindfolded. Compensation was always on a volunteer basis, I, I know. That was always, uh.
Oh, that's exactly.
Yeah, that's the same. So it's just those two changes. Or three changes that I talked about. Any questions?
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion, this is Ben.
One else, second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye. Motion for final statute.
Okay.
Aye, oh yes.
Roll call.
Aye, aye.
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 Aye. Consider resolution to reschedule public hearing date for the fiscal year twenty four budget. So remember initially we were going to have Harry. This night when old Jules said she had her house surgery in March. Well, we waited and we're gonna reset, now we have the new, uh, evaluations. And so. Please God, don't tell me. Pages. So you have a copy of the final twenty four. In front of you, if you have any questions, um, over on the levy part, I. Show you what the new, um, valuation went down to. And of course, uh, it affected the fire department total, because Walker's. Evaluations went down and ours went down and their total was based on a certain levy. Um. It also affected the revenue that we did in from the townships for the fire department. Anyone else would. Those are the main things, um, and then, um, the final, your fund balance page, your next to last page. Um, that has your estimated fund balance and its managers, the. State form, on balance estimate, you know, I just caution you, it's our best guess. And I just found out, um, today, yesterday and today, that. The amount of the SRF, kind of the development loan might be changing when going at some, and so. The assessment has that older map, so we may have to amend that at some point next year, but we always do to amend and finish things. So, um, tonight all you're doing is setting the public hearing date for April left for the fiscal twenty four budget. So. Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Consider resolution to set up public hearing date for fiscal year twenty three budget number, number two. Um, you have got a budget amendment report and the state form in your package. Um, I tried to detail all the different things and tried to get input from all the. So we, since we are doing this later, um, I did already have the insurance renewal, so I made those adjustments. And I also made the adjust in the twenty four budget based on the twenty three, okay. Um, and then, of course, I adjusted a lot for. Tread Hall for the debt repair. Added to that estimate. Um, the utility truck. We hope to have our junior nets in the budget amendment, which I will try this, but if you, if you go through that. Um, report and have any questions, but they're giving, but I think it shows line by line. And, um, got information from Shane about like, if we have a large project going. Is it done before June or not? And if not, like how much he's estimating will be done and how much needs to be carried over. Um, so I even tried to. Lower expenses if we think the project's all gonna happen, so it'd be a more realistic fund balance. That's my best guess. And you're setting that public hearing, but it's like big, big role.
Motion.
So.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Consider resolution to enter twenty eight year group, we can't afford police service. So, um, we typically do this in March. Typically, you've had your budget, your new budget adopted, but, um, they really wanna get it by the end of March for one of the last communities. They just always waited till we got further in the budget, make sure you still want to do it. So this is just. Going with the same number of hours, it'd be eighteen a week, and they always, so if I did here, they increase it in dollars, so I think it's quarter dollars. And that is the amount that's in your one quarter budget.
So last year we lost signal eighty eight, right? The presence around at night. Do you think differently without having a presence around as far as property and. Kids getting into it, I mean. I think what, signal eighty eight was about fifty thousand last year, I think is what. Just throwing up a question here is, do we keep it the same or through the summer when it gets more crazy? You know, in concern of kids. Probably some problems, maybe not, I don't know, citizens is what I.
Well, I.
They respond regardless.
Yeah.
So the thing is, if you, we can increase it, so that we say we came for fifty hours and they show up. They have to show up here, so they show up seven days, we don't pay the difference, so you can increase that, that. Presence supposedly, but they have to show up.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we've never been able to tie them down and say.
We can't tell them to show up at night or.
Yeah, we'll do a six hour, you know, shift like signal eighty eight, it's just completely different.
They're here when they're here, it's usually part reasonable, it's not.
And some lady definitely had its purposes, and I think they had some successes that were never widely known. Um, kind of they did some use and stuff, but no one said anything to me that it's been significantly worse.
I haven't had any good or bad about not, you know, having issues, but we haven't gotten through a summer. I mean, the, the whole reason we started it, and we started with a different country, uh, company. Was because of summer hit laws, so we'll see, was the kids rolling around and not having any rental vibes. But there's only other options for, I suppose. Uh, I had all, I had.
How much does it take? Maybe fifty thousand dollars worth of that to citizens.
That's awesome.
I mean, really, I'll see things occasionally, like in new and, uh, new Fairfax, you know, kids on roast crap like that, but. Or you get the video cam and just put it to people, ding dong, bitch, you know, whatever.
Maybe you can use that woman, facts, dating that, since they're no longer, if you're doing summer, that. If you see something, you just call the sheriff's department, something's going on, you call the sheriff's department.
Which you have to do that.
Well. But we saw, uh.
Let's align them about.
Drastic change in vandalism. I mean, I think we saw immediate improvement.
So if we start to have an issue, then we'll have to try to address that, but. It's so expensive to start and then lose the forest, just, we're just not there.
Reminding people and be vigilant, be aware, watch type of thing and. Good, it's, it's sort of a.
Maybe that's the thing, please start, be aware, watch, somebody's home during the day, please be more aware, kids are doing things they shouldn't be.
It's a motion, one new agreement.
You start your roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Consider motion to appoint Valerie Bill to their best standing removal commission. They certainly have one vague, this is, try to be gender balanced a little bit for. You know.
A motion, second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Fashion possible motion concerning commercial sign commitment for the multiple fifty four, please, I will turn it on. Um, I know they contacted Chris and that was on the agenda quickly. They didn't come in and didn't fill out the paper, work and pay for the sign commitment. When I asked Chris if he'd be on the phone, he said everything was a pat way of okay.
One second.
Aye.
All the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider resolution to approve the twenty twenty three elevated water storage twenty painting maintenance and repairs project. Into five plan specifications, horrible contract, and assuming cost advertised for bids. Set up public hearing date for April, October, September, three H M C, and open bids on April nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
Yeah, this is the painting and maintenance of our, our, up on the hill. This resolution says public hearing on the eleventh, build the eleventh nineteenth. Um, and then that special meeting on the twenty fifth is going to completely reward that contract. Um, we, uh, set construction start date for September fifth, day of Labor Day. Completion date of October twentieth on that, uh, so we wondered how we have. Uh, so we wondered how we'd have service for those seven weeks roughly, no condition that earlier. Set the game plan now, practice for that, so. Final cost estimate came out to four hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, so still a little bit of budget. Some questions?
Some questions for the motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Um, consider resolution to approve the twenty twenty three water extension with great break project and follow the plan specs. For contract and estimated cost advertised for bids of public hearing date for April eleven, twenty twenty three, and receive an open bid on April nineteen, twenty twenty three.
So this is the water main project, twelve inch water main, fill in that gap. Um, between about Prairie Ave going north to a couple of feet north Prairie Creek. So, just along the side, one fifty one. D O T approved our plans last week, they're okay with it, within the railway. Um, in this project, it's critical to move forward with water tower project. Um, it's no more crossing the Prairie Creek, so the water tower shut down for seven or so weeks, so will maintain flows on this side of town with pressure. Um, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars is our final cost estimate. Any questions?
Discussion motion.
On motion.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Consider resolution of ending the power power function services area with hose well and wires to collect feedings fully on the bell and at the cup property.
Yeah, so this is a, this amendment is twofold. The, the first part of it's over sixty thousand dollars, the second part's for forty thousand, so it's over a hundred thousand dollars. The first part, if you recall, um, uh, three, four months ago, we talked with council about possibility of drilling, uh, basically to test well, and it's gonna be five, six hundred thousand dollars. The council decided you don't wanna do that at this time, it makes sense, it's basically the same cost as with the initial lap for the, the production well. But what we're gonna do is put in a monitoring well, so those wells going on, you know, the east side of development, for the site. The monitoring well's gonna go on the west side for the purpose of collecting data, seeing how this well will impact the aquifer and how it will impact future wells other than the site. So this amendment was to collect that data, do the study, provide the report. Because this came Kevin mentioned a month, this last month, two months ago. So probably gonna have to roll right around and put in a second well and we're giving water treatment here in the next couple of years. We're gonna be prepared for that. So that's, that is the purpose for the first amendment for sixty thousand. For the first part of the amendment, for sixty thousand. The second part of the amendment for forty thousand dollars is basically for the pilot, so this is part of the planning for the water treatments for the mid-well. I should say the wells, wells. Was to do a pilot, then you're not gonna require a pilot, which is basically just a miniature treatment, which we drilled well and tested and see what the best treatment is, instead of spending millions of dollars on treatment and finding out it's not one of the best option, we'll just hire it. So we had in the budget for the project, uh, for that to be basically shot out to a supplier. And you would provide the pilot and you go automatically analysis, if you think there was wrong with that. And Kevin said he wanted to do this work here in the, in, and, and when we're gonna do this, prepare the pilot. So in doing that, we're taking away the cost on the back end, so it's not additional cost. But it's being moved, so Kevin's prepared the pilot. But I S G is gonna have to do work analyzing data, working with Kevin to make sure it's all done right, it's moving to be hard. And then once it's up, we're gonna analyze that data, um, for the final energy design and the treatment. Kevin, is that pretty accurate or do you have anything to add to that?
Um, I S G, yes, created the pilot from vendor, because they were thirty six thousand dollars. And that is their rental and their data collection. They come out, they take the samples, they do the data collecting. There's no reason we can't do that. We do that every day anyway. And uh, we can build a miniature plant, and you should see these pilots, comes in shoebox. I mean, they're put together on site, they're put together with whatever pieces they can get ahold of to make it work. Treatment is treatment, however it looks doesn't make any difference, it functions the same way. You know, some of these are vague, they can be semi trailer, some you like have a generator out there running. You'll sampling, like I said, they estimate they weigh thirty six thousand, and I think that we could do a much better job of collecting the data and doing it in-house.
So the budget, the budget, and actually then like generate the costs in that. So when we put, get the budget from C I P, we actually lose seventy thousand. So their forty thousand, we estimate may see, so they have ten thousand that it should be under what's already been budgeted. And the first part of that amendment, that sixty thousand is also into it, since that was discussed a month ago, is also included in the the um C I P number that is in, that will be built, so it's, all these costs are within what's already been planned, but in this order.
Shane, is the forty thousand that we're talking about from I S G just a budgeted number with what it could be, would be less than that? Or is that a firm number?
I, it could come in less than that, right? I'm guessing then it'll come from and Kevin, you're saying we can do B on our own, uh, you're saying that correctly?
I mean, we, we can build a pilot, we're building a pilot with two hundred and fifty gallon totes, and some pumps. With twelve inch B D C, like eight feet tall, and making internal filter. Like, I've seen all this, and I actually worked on some of it, it's not that difficult.
So you would have some cost, but you can, we could eliminate that forty thousand.
No.
Well, that's
Forty, we're moving it from the back end to the, to the designers.
We're moving it from them hiring another company to do it.
It was gonna have to be done anyway, nowhere another.
I just missed it, I thought you were suggesting that doing it itself, you, we could eliminate B.
No, 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 that, that is confusing.
With you.
That, that cost, we, how it all breaks down. Kevin mentioned the thirty sixty thousand, so when we put together this C I P, we used sixty thousand, and they gave us ten thousand dollars for the generator on there. So we budgeted seventy thousand, so basically that seventy thousand is all what we added forty thousand from I S G, and we're assuming maybe ten thousand from Kevin and city. And then it's still ten thousand or so from the generator, so we may come in and instead of seventy, we may come to sixty, it's hard to say. But it shouldn't be above the seventy we already established.
We're just gonna have in-house data with our, with I S G, it's the engineering term, analyzing the data instead of having a vendor do that.
Are you more comfortable doing that, seeing, you know, what's going on?
Absolutely.
So when you're taking your data, um, Kevin, is this gonna be, are you gonna be like hurting up like a um, you know, an external power drive, maybe you're taking it all the time, or you're just gonna have somebody go over there like every hour and test, test this?
We, most of the tests are done just daily, or they have to be done, the metering will have to be done every day, the sampling as we get into the biological, starting to grow in the reactor. Build one samples, maybe two, three times a week. So we estimated maybe ten thousand dollars at the very, very most to build it. And there will be some, that cost, the supplies, but it should, should be well, it should be better budgeted than, than the budget that's on. I think everybody down in public works is sort of anxious to see it happen.
We have plenty of time to look at that.
We do that daily in the water system, and this would be just part of the checks.
Discussion motion.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Flat one Bushman's confusion, consider resolution to approve the site of our channel report.
So the ambushman's proposing a uh new building on a site, and they're able to save some improvements. And the building's uh truck maintenance, two thirds of their plate and construction storage, and another third, we're taking. Um, specific to the site plan and the green building, they're all in there. Any questions or?
Did Chris have any comments?
Um, he just said everything in the pack up was at the point of those. Um, and then Bushman didn't stop in and sign all of that.
So hook up city water and sewer all services, just like
Yeah, and this, separate items underneath that will run through the church, so.
It's just a separate one, maybe, yeah, and Chris and they are that side of the site development plan, they're looking at it and worked for a while, like, I think, I don't know. Yes, that is a motion.
Aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Consider resolution to approve the power project.
Um, so the development agreement, this is basically the standard development agreement, we had all the site developments, nothing you couldn't quit it. You know, just talk, maintain in private, keep swarm out of attention, by line and so forth. In reference, there's a private water main agreement, which will touch on that, so. Nothing really special to point out with it, putting the development agreement, yes.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Consider resolution to approve private water new agreement.
So, you know, a couple of years ago, we had the sewer water project extended watering south along Fairfax Road, enough to be able to service the Trabero site. And um during that project, Dan had Schrader, estimating contractors install a twelve inch by eight inch tee in, in gate valve, and then across the city. And Kevin and John were aware of that, and said he was okay with that. Um, but, so on this site plan, he's using that tee and gate valve, and he's gonna extend it and range water mains back to the property to hook up this proposal building, and he's gonna hook up this existing building too. Um, so since there's private water main on the site, we're entering into this private water main agreement. We've done it with Trabero site, we've done it with the uh, the regen site, so it's very similar to that. Um, it just spells out their responsibility, they can't respond to so forth. Um, in that the city will go out there and no charge, at least once a year, you know, as needed, to go out and exercise the valves, the fire management, etc. So it's pretty similar to the other ones that we've done. Um, one little difference, I guess, is this site has an existing private well. And so when Dan forces, picks up the water main, to the city's water main with his existing building, he's gonna have to disconnect that well first, necessarily, no contamination issues. He can still use and maintain that well, um, on the site, we can connect the, when the city has sort of common water system, so that's something, that's a little bit different than the other ones, you guys have looked at in the past.
On motion.
Roll call please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Consider resolution to approve the water main connection fee.
So the water main connection fee, again, that sewer line project, we established uh sewer connection fees. So on the water main, um, there's actually two agreements in there, they're exactly the same. Um, the difference is one has a tapping fee included, and it's a four thousand dollar tapping fee. And the other has that four thousand dollar tapping fee waived. So these go back to resolutions that were established to connect the water main fees for um that project, we had established resolutions back um a year or so ago for the, um, the sanitary sewer and the water main connection fees. And so that's what these fees are based off of. Um, as I mentioned, with the private water main agreement, Dan had Schrader estimating install a twelve inch by eight inch tee and gate valve, there's no cost to the city of that, and that's what he'll be tying on to. So Dan has requested that the city waive that four thousand dollar tapping fee, um, since the city had no additional cost for that initial um installation or anything like that, and he's gonna utilize that gate valve and tee, so.
Shane, stupid question, is there even like a fire victim out there?
Yeah.
Okay. So it must have been out of the plan, right, sorry?
Yeah, it's in the development agreement, we go out there and flush, flush them. And use it, they can't be used by anyone other than city fire.
So the, the connection fee, I guess, for water main, um, with the tapping fee and taxes, it's twenty four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and ninety one cents. If the council chooses to waive that four thousand dollar tapping fee, it's nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty six dollars and ninety one cents. One thing I will mention, um, if you, if maybe you recall, maybe you don't, um, that those connection fees that were established by resolution, basically, if you're serving a vacant lot, you're gonna pay you know, it's hundred percent of your half of the road, so we extend water main on the road. And obviously, you know, that's water main service both sides of the road. And then you cut that cost in half, you're on one side and half on the other. So if you're serving a vacant lot, you have to pay a hundred percent of your half of that fee. But if you're an existing lot, the city won't charge you half of that. So that, since they is opening up this existing building, is getting that fifty percent. And that's separate from that four thousand dollar tapping. So I guess there's, there's two questions for the council. Number one, if I go, you wanna waive that four thousand dollar tapping fee? Which would be the, you know, the total fee of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and sixty seven dollars per month, included for twenty four thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. And you have, you know, this can be on.
We already paid that, but T and L, that's really, most of that labor is, are taken up to the coordinator's half of that, why I committed, it was a part.
Yeah, it's, it's to help distribute the cost, and the cost for the cities to go out there and observe that and be involved with that.
Motion.
So you said there's two things.
Well, basically, which one you wanted to go with, what it
Okay.
Yeah, probably an option.
One is keep the four thousand option, so it's weighted to four thousand. And there was a site we were able to wait in the four thousand, because he already paid, so he settled, as we said previously, when they were stalling.
Do you weigh yours almost all the four thousand, do you say?
I make a motion to waive the four thousand dollar thing.
I think.
You already motioned.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
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 Sorry.
Consider resolution approved through the water main connection fee.
So then this is the same thing as for the Santerio sewer connection. And in that resolution establishing the, the Santerio sewer connection fees, it spells out, since the city. Extended a Santerio sewer stub in Dan's property, there was no actual lateral sewer made extended, since he was tying in, basically, might have used the manual at the time. The city put in a sewer and stubbed it out from the property. So basically, with just that cost, plus taxes and then the interest rate over the one year period, so. That total is, yeah, nineteen, one thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and six cents.
Motion?
Aye.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Discussion impossible, no potential approval with those which may occur, is this right? And everything's okay, this is fine, Shane, I'm good.
Have you signed it today, so?
Um, no, this he had signed, filled out after this earlier, today he's signing all of the bridge, this is.
All motions?
For yesterday.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Lot three Carl's second edition, no lot five, the future site, consider resolution approved through site development place.
So this is just across the street here in the vacant lot. Through the professional plumbing, just through the professional plumbing and east of Walms. No bad electric, just closing the facility up in there, I understand, maybe not. Utilize half of it, two thirds of it for themselves, the business and the rest of it maybe rent out for commercial use. Everything's in order, be private detention. Anything extra from a site plan and. First commodity, the port first from the range, same thing.
Which direction do they have and then drain towards to the south?
Between, yeah, between.
Towards the back.
Kind of drain to the south, yeah. They've got, at the bottom, so, obviously, I think it's so flat out there, you don't know. You've got it built up three or four feet and then they've got detention on the east side and detention on the west side, it's the backside of the building. And basically, because it's so flat and there's not much elevation to drain out to, they've got basically a rainier swell. Down bottom trench, down bottom each pond. So that'll open, create some of it and they've got six eight inch on the tile that's already at that southeast corner of the balcony, so.
Still flooded there, is that before ability or whatever? Drashed to her place. There's a lot of speed in that.
I think the swell, the concrete swell, cleaning that up helps some, but it, it gets so flat, heavy storms hit through. Coincidentally, back in fourteen, it just almost found out in many others, still the side of the plane. All right, what was that?
One of the property owners, you know, blocked the drainage, that kind of screws everyone, but let's not rehash that now. Oh, wait, I just did, oops.
Discussion motion?
All, second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consider resolution to approve development agreements.
Again, this is the site development agreement for this site, for the no bad electric site and it's generally the same, but. Private detention violation, we're keeping that, we need all the documents and they're going to be closing issues of permits and issues of occupancy and so on and so forth. One thing I do want to point out with the development agreement on this site. Since we know at some point, something's going to happen at the A Street Highway one fifty-one intersection, we don't know exactly when, we don't know exactly what. We had established basically roadway reservation along the north and east property lines. Even at these corners, if you look closely in the site coming, that's called out, there's a line, there's an agreement. Just set that, that area aside, so when that, those improvements happen, the DOT and the city have. Enough property to ensure that can happen. And it doesn't, obviously it impacts the property in a line, but it doesn't, but on the east side, the city already has sewer and water running down and they've got the detention. On the north side, it may impact a little bit, but it's also angled, it's a tough area to build and develop. Plus, we, there's another condition in that development, you know, about if they do build and put storage in there. You know, we have to provide some site, it's the only thing, basically that shows that it's not going to impact the site distances from that intersection. We don't want to go ahead and just go out thinking, you know, including putting this building up there or, you know, stored with. Large equipment and stuff, it impacts site distance at that intersection, so. Those are two patterns you need to add in that development agreement. Um, that's pretty standard of what we're doing.
Yeah, motion? Just, hold on, um, just a general question, I apologize, so. What is the vision of the city?
As far as?
Well, in Bernie's resignation, he says that he's proud of the vision, he's proud of the city council carrying it through. So, what would that vision be?
In relation to that intersection, I guess what?
Are you talking on the broadest sense?
Cardi, you want to answer it?
So you, we're talking about no locks, future site, and you're asking with vision, what does that have to do with that, the question, I think I'm confused.
All right, I'll, I'll lead the witness there. The one fifty-one, not the best, how do you picture that to look? Five years from now, ten years from now, fifty years from now?
That's not really relevant.
Well, that's very much solutionist right now, so that's not really the agenda I can sort of, let's see, see the news.
So that, so that is something that, we know what we're kind of looking for, but P and Z, if I understand this, P and Z is working on that, that.
Pressed on explored.
Well, they're supposed to be working on that, as far as like an interim way, what we want this name thoroughfare to look like. Um, we've talked about it a couple of times and they're, they were going back and we're slowly looking at some other things. But, so we are discussing that, but we're not the ones, we're leaving that more up to them.
So in approving, first of all, you know, a vision, right? Building the city intelligent, you know, developing the highway here with retail paid businesses, you know, things of that nature, almost like a mission statement. So, no offense to roofer, plumbers, any kind of contractor, service base administrator. It's great advertising sitting out on that intersection on that highway, he should have bought it.
You have no, why are we even having this discussion? Seriously, sit down. I, no, I, I will reiterate, that is not what this agenda topic is, is the vision of the city, it's about approving builder perfect and the development agreement. That's all. If you want to talk about visioning, which I'm all for, then you need to request that you put on an agenda for next month's.
Or we can talk about this at the end of the meeting, when opportunity, citizens are the agenda buddy. He is correct, we need to stay on topic and the topic right now is the building permit and appears to meet all the requirements that we have at this time, so. Thank you.
One thing I will add, and to the topic was, we right now, the vacant lot is set major for many doors. It's, we have professional plumbing, we have long surrounding, they're nice looking buildings, they keep their, their properties up. With proposed building, the post-site layout, you know, as far as we can tell, we're playing on the secure, on the fourth side of the. No bad electric's been operating in this community for a while and it has a good reputation, so. I, I don't see it being completely out of line with our, with the party in the area. If you jump on the other side of the road, that may be a fair question, I think it's put them over the site. So that's, I guess, one of the development question, the development.
Oh, yeah, I have a motion, we're going through the development agreement. Roll call please.
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion impossible, no, no lock, no water, technically, to bring in. Again, good that everything, I'm just a hard. Motion?
Any other thing?
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aye, aye. Aye.
Aye. Discussion impossible, motion concerning employee vacation.
So, you had made a change to, number, change after seven weeks. To agree, add another forty hours and then instead of fifteen years, so now twelve years for. Another week. And in that past of February, it's effective, we didn't. I had an employee come in and ask, he's going to give us extra week, and I said, well. When you approve your vacation, that's which, we approve our vacation on our anniversary day, so. He's, it's like, well, I thought it was effective, you mean? It was, but we don't, no, hang on. So then, believe it or not, employees aren't caring about it and wanted it to be the agenda for the session. So I've shown you the accrual schedule, showed you which employees would get the change when their free. Anniversary date comes up in twenty-three. And then also showed and discussed with the core employees, you would go back to retro. If you're really doing retro for all these employees, Kathy Bay would get three more weeks because she's already passed with it, so she didn't get those extra weeks that twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And Lynn and I would get the extra week for twelve, thirteen. I'm not advocating that, that's all, I'm just showing the vision. It was my understanding that we weren't changing when it's the truth. We could just change to the last week.
Pardon this original discussion, we're seeing, or it's Kevin, that he requested, it's over January. If you even, they believe in the audit, so if that was the case, he would never have seen it that he did leave in August. So we all assumed it started in January, we got that week. I asked the twenty-three man. Yes, sir.
His renewal date is July.
So that's where they initially started, but we didn't expect to go back to the past. We just thought it was going to start like, we started new, right, we started not yet again.
Well, I forgot, I just let I all try to try to speak for everyone, I think this is something that we always talk about, since we talked about doing it, we didn't.
Say when?
We didn't really clarify.
We didn't change the accrual.
And that, that's how her symptom works, so that's what she thought.
Well, that's how, but that's the personnel box.
Yeah, but, but, so that's how it works, but we didn't discuss. One way or the other, so I can see how they, how they thought what they thought, she's doing what's normal. And I just said, this has to be discussed by, by, and not positions her.
Let me assume that was what started, I think.
Tell me, true or untrue? In calendar day, not your anniversary day?
Well, we can, we, or I see, well, you do the way you done, you were, you talked about this in January, we can't present other than you have Kevin. You know, in January, so we figured it was started in June. So that was our main misunderstanding.
That was not, I.
Yeah, that. I thought the vacation hours was basically the anniversary period.
Yes.
And that's how it works where I work, but I'm busy, I think, thinking what they would give you. So, also I've got, I don't know who's doing my handprints.
This is the page that was going to happen, and this is what says that you're on the anniversary kind of week.
So I guess what my comment is, I would have to wait until my eighth year to get my extra week of vacation, when a, a year passed. The timeframe's seven years when I should have got it. And since you lowered the fifteen to twelve, so the other individuals are going to get it maybe up to two years earlier.
Well, we didn't get it at twelve, and we didn't get it at thirteen.
No, but you got it, you're not going to fifteen now. But I'm having to go to eight.
Right, but if they hadn't made the change, you would be getting the extra forty at eight.
Well, maybe they should reverse all the changes. I'd be just fine with that. I just don't see where it's fair right now.
So, refresh my memory here, we got, what were the intervals?
It previously said, one year upon, two, two weeks at two years. Three weeks at seven years. Four weeks at fifteen, that's what it was.
Then we just changed.
And the seven year, because Kevin negotiated three weeks, so he's been getting three weeks since year one. So he has been getting extra weeks all along. And so we changed the wording for the seven year to be not three weeks, but just an additional forty hours. So at seven weeks, he would go up four weeks. And then we changed the fifteen to four weeks down to twelve. To make it the same interval between two and seven.
So with the wording, that seven years, he had four weeks.
Seven years, you get an extra forty hours.
Apparently, were you starting on three?
Yeah.
So say four, five, then you have six.
No, he was just.
Not four. Just, okay, you started out quarter mile or.
Because otherwise, he doesn't ever get any more vacation.
No, I, I wouldn't negotiate and start here, knowing that in fifteen years, I wasn't getting any more vacations. I'm not quite sure what that would be.
If he started in fifteen. In seven years, he gets a lot. We ran it down last year.
But he is still red, three weeks, and he was over yet.
Right.
So that's why we changed it, so now. Yeah, to.
Like you're saying, who wouldn't, in this, and we're just talking about him or her. Technically, if he wouldn't go till.
Is it, is it.
Even though he already qualifies for it, but he had negotiated this extra week, we'll change the policy to four.
Right, they didn't change policy to that.
In my understanding, that's where you stop that one, that's fair.
Well, and, and I, I get that, so to her point, it's based on hire, that's what we do at the shop, but I also understand. That if he got that extra week, I don't know who should be penalizing him for that. Waiving until he was dead.
Cause he's staying there, he's not excited.
I don't care, so.
Well, I, I just want you to understand, with the other employees, you got time to regulate the issues. I'm not asking, but if you do it for one, you do it for all. I'm not asking, but if you do it for one, you do it for all. You you treat all the employees and say, either you're going to award those extra weeks based on the changes? Or you're gonna keep it at on the anniversary date?
I would be a hundred percent in agreement with Cynthia on that.
So is he not at, you're, this this summer, you didn't pay out eight years?
I'm gonna be at eight years.
Yeah, seven thirty one is eight.
So when he hit the seven years, the policy was three weeks, it's already out.
Okay.
And so now, his next anniversary date, when he would accrue, he had eight, go current policy, he gets extra forty hours.
So where did you add extra forty, wasn't it on year seven?
It should have been, but I think it was done that.
But it was a policy when you accrued seven. And just like when Lynn and I hit our twelve. The policy was no extra weeks.
More extra week.
And through the thirteen, the policy was no extra week, but when our next accrual comes, now there isn't.
Right.
You know, when you, that's why it's here, when you go by the policy.
So at the end of my seven years, Brian got his extra week, I was curious about mine, and I said, that's not the way of grid. And so it took a few months to actually put some ducks in the road, decided. Maybe it's trying to pursue this and see if we can get this changed, and it took. All the way into January.
Sure.
And that little change, and that it changed.
Well, that.
Cause you don't have another, there's no other vacancy at twelve, right?
I won't be.
No, I understand. So I was supposed to max out at four.
Yeah, he would not get.
No, that's it.
He max out at one sixty, right?
It all has to do with your start. Your fortune.
It was last, when he was council in the administration. We negotiated, I was not coming from North Liberty, was starting at zero. The experience that you're looking for.
Agreed.
And I understand that too, but realize he's got three weeks.
Oh, yeah.
All the way through.
So how many people are at that seven full year mark? That are still waiting for their last six months or whatever, or they're currently, they're collecting?
Well, um, Kathy Bane accrues one, one. Uh, there's only four affected by the changes.
Unlived over.
Kathy is January and Kevin's in July. Kevin's next stop, she's making two. But when you hit your twelve, you didn't get.
No, yeah.
The extra week. Or when you hit thirteen, you didn't get there, when you hit forty, you didn't request, because that wasn't the policy.
Thanks mostly about this time on, if you have it to any place, and I need to give them towards the forty days. Yeah. And I have to, I mean, it's going on higher date, yes, we changed the policy at the time to. Better reflect adding numbers. Now punishing him for getting successfully negotiating extra week of vacation. I would say punishing, I would say higher.
He's a year sign. Well, his start date was a year.
Yeah.
That's just a fortunate side. I can agree to comment, there should just. Crap. There's no intent, angry because discussed wages or a clock. Questions and concerns on wages and.
I believe it was first discussed in December, and it was adopted in February.
So.
So they have another part of something you can.
I have another week.
No, forty hours, based on, based on.
Kathy would get three weeks, Lynn would get two weeks, and I would get two.
If you want to do a true max of twelve years, otherwise. Do the.
So the extra forty hours. So I saw a fool.
If you would start it in January.
So Kathy would be at four weeks, not three. But she already is at.
She's at four.
She's at ready at four.
So she's at four, and you're at how many?
Wait.
I'm so confused now. I, so how many weeks do you get two?
Two.
But in the new policy.
On your anniversary day, you get extra. You'll have.
With Lynn and Cynthia each get additional forty hours if we modify it.
That's what I was saying, everyone just gets another week, so they would all get.
So you're just going back to last year.
Right, isn't that what you were making? I'm I'm not sure.
So you're not giving Kathy any additional benefit for year twelve and thirteen and fourteen.
But I thought it read max at that one season.
Yeah, but I don't want, I I know, I don't either, I'm not, I'm pretty clear, I can't even use four weeks in this. So I was thinking, when she hit twelve years, when I hit twelve years, when you didn't get twelve years.
So what 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 she's saying is.
They they did the extra.
Yeah, the three people that would be affected if we change this would be Lynn, Kevin, and Cynthia. The reason being is because we're going on a starting date, which didn't go into effect until February. So the people that would be affected would be Cynthia in May, um, Kevin technically at year eight in July, and then Lynn in November. But if we go back and basically retroactively make it to their higher date, those all three of them would get an additional. Right, even though the policy wasn't officially changed until February this year, we're counting, so their start date to be applying. To essential last year, see, wasn't that clear as much?
You're making account for the shirt as well, it's the next anniversary date, they can't get any more anyone, so all the.
I see, so the way it means policies are new hires is not. Current ways of what you're doing, you're just service. Cause you, how many of you guys are past seven years, most, not most yet? I'm confused.
But all three of us are all past year, we're all past twelve year, and you made it a change for the twelve year too.
But you have a year fifteen year, so now you're.
Fifteen doesn't care, doesn't matter.
That one all the way.
The twelve, the twelve.
But you're twelve.
Right, so that's what.
And you don't get that twelve year until you hit your anniversary date, that's the problem, right?
It's not a problem for me.
I'm just saying that's the issue, right?
That's the issue for women.
Three of you are going to hit your anniversaries, anniversary dates in the next.
Well, we all have an anniversary day every year, I'm not sure.
That's what anniversary is.
We're gonna hit.
Three people would be affected, and they would, well, Lynn would be the longest of all, cause he's October, so he would be the shortest now. Um, first would be Cynthia, a month and a half, roughly two months, and then um, Kevin, two and a half months after that. And then Lynn bringing back the girl's ball, three months.
When we discussed wages, a lot of our conversation was to keep in pace. With other places, and there's such a range. Is what we've had in fact now, along the same lines of what. Where we all work at, one of the people that we know that work at this. I mean, cause that's why we had raises to begin with, we've moved them up the last few years. I remember three years ago, I think it was a fifty cent raise.
All joking aside, I my intent was effective of the date of I. Not when the policy was changing.
Right, so I would be looking to reward Cynthia, Lynn, and Kevin with the official.
Or the date of hire from last year.
Date of hire from the university, you got, hired this. You hit that seven year mark or twelve year mark or whatever the hell it is. Right? Yeah, and then twelve.
Yeah. So you want to go back to when I hit my twelve year, that wasn't in twenty two. That's what I'm saying, that was in twenty one, so how far are we going back?
I feel like we're waiting for it for a little bit.
So Lynn and I hit our twelve year, which is what you made the change in, in twenty one.
Okay. So that's where you top out for us.
Yeah. So you would get four weeks at the end.
Yeah.
But right now, you're only two.
I'm at three, I.
Yeah, she did three, and if you change the difficulty for, for when this year, she did two months sooner than we'll be.
I mean, I think that was the intent was to see, cause then we all get four, right? So don't we just all get them four, like right now?
Yeah.
Can't we just, you know, they don't all get four right now? I don't know.
And I go back, and I go back.
Yeah, and I would just stay moving forward, everyone, we all draw up the four weeks, and we move it back.
So we're basically correcting it to accurately reflect everyone's higher basis. And that's the word to listen, so Cynthia will give this year forty hours.
That's the way it is now.
Time to tell you the hiring.
Right.
But I'm saying now, uh, now.
The forty hours is four, I think. Even use between now. Well, sure, there is a twenty twenty mark. Well, it's your twelve year, right? No, she was at level still.
No, cause the policy didn't make it to the week as well. I just thought.
But what was our twelve year service?
Twenty one.
That's what I'm saying, he gets access to.
But it was fifteen years at the time, but who's on the.
You want to make a change, I'm trying to.
He was changing, this is what I was going to work.
I don't think any of us are suggesting you back pay your, your, your holiday pay three years back, where you're creating an extra, you know. Three, four weeks on top of your three weeks, that's what you're trying to get at.
I was just about holiday pay, oh.
That's not a bad vacation thing.
I I don't know.
Say you got yours in twenty one, and you didn't use any retroactive, and you got, I gotta get forty days for, I didn't use for twenty two, forty days, and you used twenty three, and that was on the better hearing. I don't think that's still what we're kind of.
I I don't want you to do that either, I don't think anybody should be retro that.
That's not, yeah. So I don't know any of that. What I'm getting is you're in that window now. But you didn't get those. Vacation hours from the two years before. Cause you're two years into that window.
So, so either Cynthia, Lynn, and Kevin get an extra week right now, or they don't.
Well, that's.
I mean, isn't, isn't that it, isn't that the?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Either they get it right now.
Or they hit their anniversary date, whatever, but I don't.
Cause I think I've had twelve hours in discussions.
Okay. And then on our renewal.
No.
We're not getting the six one sixty, we're getting.
Your F ones. Well, you'll get your three weeks.
No, it would be four.
No, that would be a four weeks.
And are you on your anniversary?
Then it starts your four weeks for the whole year.
So at twelve years, they get a hundred sixty out.
No.
And it renews their anniversary. So they would be getting forty hours percentage if you can burn up. In the next couple of months, Lynn was saying, and until November, and Gavin soon.
And then on our anniversary day, later this year, then you get four weeks.
On the anniversary day.
So we are retroving this extra week back to our anniversary number of years in twenty two.
For twelve years now. So essentially, yes, yes, last year.
That's like.
Joe.
No, what are you doing, Joe?
Are you guys done with this one?
No, he's just getting out there ahead of time.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just getting.
Those are nice pool ready, that plus, I think that's what we're, our intention is to give them all a week and just. So then it's. You shouldn't make it work out of your own style, you just do that.
No, you're gonna have to go out, because I don't agree with it, so I'm not gonna just make it work, you're gonna be very specific in your motion. Kevin's been on it or asking about this, I'm saying, no. I'm not taking any responsibility.
Sorry.
You pull it, you believe in it, then you should wanna do it. I just don't believe in it, so I'm not gonna change.
He's on. So you could like, proclaim very low.
I'm going to just make that back to their twenty twenty two anniversary week. So we fit it with that.
So we have to.
We'd have to go back and get it. Would you have to redo the ordinance or what else?
Employee.
Quite possible.
You could probably make a motion with specific. Set of circumstances, as long as you're clearing. Again, if an auditor asks, I'm not taking anything.
Let's just do that, we could do one thing.
Or going back, but we just kind of wait.
Well, I really, to be serious, I don't think we should change the uh, two policies. Specifically set out motion to individual.
Increase for weeks.
Add, no, no, not even that, we change that, the specific motion to give one or three hours of vacation to. Cynthia to get. Lynn, Kevin's confused, you know, later for Cynthia by five, whatever.
Their anniversary.
Seven thirty, yes, their higher.
It has to use right now, I mean, cause we could roll over.
They can roll hours. Why would you make it more complicated?
Because I probably not crossing our employee manual.
You can burn up forty hours.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Well, not unless it's under forty hours, right?
Yeah, that's what I just answered.
Well. We're using every one, seven forty hours, and we'll get up next, if we have time.
Do you have something to tell me?
Well, I just have um, to award forty hours of vacation to Cynthia, Lynn, and Kevin. I did not put in to use it, I had a five anniversary.
Have you all called please?
Oh, yeah.
Seventy minutes, seventy five.
Well, do we want to add anything to that? Any qualifiers to that, or just passes?
No, very many changes to policy for the years in service though. Unless you want to make a note that you're trying to adjust years of service or something for twenty two.
Yes. That we're gonna do.
Trying to adjust your.
Trying to adjust, yeah.
They're only here to service for twenty, year twelve twenty.
We'll make a motion. Second.
Roll call please.
Hi.
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 Joe.
Hi, Joe.
All right, so umpires this year, uh, in the past, they've always been paid by F Y S A, and it's been managed, so nobody got over. Six hundred dollars, so there was never a need for a ten ninety nine. However, this year, uh, it's possible that could happen, I've lost two umpires, uh, two umpires have asked for more games. Uh, since they're gonna be ten ninety nine anyway. And coming up with a plan to pay them, Cynthia and I have come up with this plan, we'd like to play, pay them AP checks once a week instead of once a month. And coming up with a plan to pay them, Cynthia and I have come up with this plan, we'd like to play, pay them AP checks once a week instead of once a month. And I'm gonna go through city council, they'll still go through city council, you guys will see what we have done. But one of the attractive parts of umpiring for Fairfax was they got paid the night of the game. And so the umpires that I've talked to that are sticking around, they're okay getting paid once a week. I'll present an invoice, an AP invoice to Cynthia on Monday morning, she'll cut a check and then I'll take the checks to the umpires that week. So they will have to wait a week for their, uh, money, but it's better than waiting a month for it. We'd like to approve for that.
And council by resolution cannot authorize clerk to issue AP checks for a specific purpose as long as your deed open resolution. And as long as the check is still on the claims list, the clerk is authorized to write off.
So they basically get their checks one week.
They get a check once a week.
Rather than a month.
Yes.
Almost.
Well, second.
Go call please.
Hi.
Um. Consider both motions entered into a public sector payment processing agreement, but I threw vertical.
Right, so this company has actually bought out Ace Payment Processing with, uh, city users now. We have been able to secure, uh, card readers for the two concession stands. That will not cost us anything, we get those free of charge. Uh, the charge for using a card, debit card, a credit card at the concession stand is two point seven five percent. There's no other fee with it, and that fee will be passed along to the customer if they decide to use their card. Uh, we have purchased two hotspots so that we can use for, uh, each of the concession stands. And, uh, right now, the agreement that we have is with, um, T-Mobile, which is forty five dollars a month per location. Uh, Kathy has given me somewhere else to look into and I, I started looking into that tonight, and there was something in there about, it was only, um, nonprofits or libraries. So I haven't looked all the way into that yet, but I may not even be able to do that.
Yeah, so T-Mobile.
Is it, what is it?
U S cellular.
U S cellular, I'm sorry, I don't know what, I don't know what was on.
And it's not, it's forty five for both of them. It's not forty five for each.
Uh, okay, alright.
So wrong company, wrong amount.
Wrong company, wrong amount, yeah, so, there we go, forty five dollars for the, uh, down package for both of them.
Can you just use those hotspots just for?
You can check out the library once.
I'm sorry.
Can you just use those hotspots just for Hawk April through?
Yes, yes, and when we shut it off, it doesn't cost us anything, we're just on a month to month agreement with them, and when we start it back up, there's no. Restart fee or anything like that, we use it when we use it, when we don't use it when we don't need it.
Yeah, a lot of people wanting to use debit cards, credit cards and stuff at the.
I, I wouldn't say a lot of them, but I would think maybe ten percent of our business may come from that, which could be by a thousand dollars. But that's it, that's a guess. Two, so that, uh, two point seven five percent basically is twenty eight cents per every ten dollars. That they spend, we can put a, uh, minimum charge on it that they have to use for that, I don't know why we would, as long as they're paying freight. They pay five, they spend five dollars and twenty four cards, so I have to pay the freight on the hot dogs.
Move your hot dog from two dollars to two fifty.
What's that?
Move your hot dog price to two dollars to two fifty.
The, the hot dog prices are at three twenty five.
Three twenty five.
He, he just arranged.
Well, and I think what's fair about it is that if you use your card and pay the, the fee on it, that way, uh, you're not paying the same price minus a fee that somebody paid cash for.
Now, most companies and entities do that, and they pass credit card fees on to the consumer, uh, most people have, uh, as long as they can, but.
Yeah.
It adds up.
That's what we do all the time downstairs, I've seen somebody buy one garbage bag for a dollar fifty, and our minimum fee's a dollar fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some people just don't carry cash anymore.
Yeah, right.
Always a thing.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, you add it up, it's a lot, so I don't.
And having a card reader and, uh, doesn't cost us anything at all.
So, and most people, you know, at our shop, we pass it on and I thought people would, would be angry, same thing, whatever. Give this business growth.
And they'll provide us with some signs to put at the windows to the. Testing.
As long as you have the sign back.
Any questions?
Second.
Go call please.
Hi, hi. Hi.
Hi. Discussion possible motion concerning temporary part time signal maintenance.
That, uh, that's replacing Jason. So this is actually two, they had two applications, every one. What I recommend for one.
I mean, they have it on the next resolution, but.
Yes, so the name of her is. However. And that will rotate. His choice.
Can he survive though? I mean, putting him to the ground.
And so this is where the part time state. And what grade?
For the same just you.
It's, what's the? And that's not our options, trying to hear two names, people just no grass and was fifteen starting.
I haven't seen that. Tiger City.
Over any more part. So do we need to just, um, a motion, does a motion?
Motion.
Second.
I'll listen later.
Alright.
Bye.
From the rest of the championship point on the facial. So this has got two added and the part behind Susan Mall Park is going to chill or higher.
Need Joe question?
Yeah.
Agreement deep down there, is that just concessions worker?
Armor. Yes.
Oh, sorry, concessions. I will.
Yeah, she is concession.
Second.
Go call please.
Hi.
Hi.
Discussion or possible motion concerning repair work on swing to all death.
Okay, so a month ago, the problem where it suddenly hit, um, we had water leaking underneath the deck, that was through the. Uh, ceiling tiles were running through, which in turn made a buckle and. Once I took out the bad ones, I noticed that the plywood is all black and moldy and whatever, it's been leaked for quite a while. Finally leaked enough to ruin the ceiling, some of the ceiling tiles, so. This was a lot of investigative effort to get to this point, and, uh, between the three, what we actually called six people, three of them declined over the phone. Well, actually, two of them come out and look, two of the three declined, come out and look, and one of them was super busy. And the other one, they, they were kinda in the same, we don't have enough information to give you the number, we're just gonna respectfully do one, so. Um, the other great gives number one was just a quick look, that was, uh, uh, Hawkeye Flat Roof Solutions, they gave, uh, a very basic number with a lot of descriptions, so. That's not choice, uh, I think K Rofin was pretty expensive, I know they did some extra stuff, but it was quite that. Much more value. And my recommendation is the polyvinyl Rofin, looks like they were gonna do everything, they seemed confident when I talked to them. They can do it soon, and they have really got a little more in their projects, so. Made it sound like they're really starting on it pretty soon, although it would be the. Pavers, whatever it takes to get those in, and we can try and do it within a time and order, try and not. Disrupt the weekend rentals anymore than it's necessary.
So we're getting away from the composite deck, we're going to the pavers?
Yes, and that was on the original plan. They did not build this deck to the original specs that were on the plan. They didn't chance, they had, there was more support beams under there than they're supposed to be, there's supposed to be two foot centers, they actually put them on sixteen foot centers, or sixteen inch centers.
Right.
But the decking, when they put it on there, there's plywood, waterproofing membrane, then they put, uh, fur strips. And put the composite deck on, and when they did the decking, I just found out after I took a few deck boards off, there's a joint between the two sides. And they anchored it down with a conduit pipe and lag bolts that went down through the membrane. And then they caulked around it, well, I think the caulk's failed now, and so that's probably where the issues are gonna be. So the plans to take up the deck, take up the membrane, reply, uh, replace the necessary plywood. As long as the structure members are fine, which I believe they are, I'm looking at down below, now we can determine after they pull the plywood off it.
I have my big question, we had an actual dead load with the concrete that was already originally engineered that way.
Yep, it said specifically two by two concrete pavers. So, that's what I'm going with because I'm thinking, one, it was on spec, two, we don't have to worry about putting any kind of holes in it. There's gonna be a sacrificial layer on top of it, they said, and then this is what they do a lot, so. That's kinda what I was hoping for is no mechanical holes.
So if we get in there and there's a scissor joint, it's all rotten. What do we do with that for us?
And we'll have to figure out how we can go about repairing it. I don't think it's anything significant or major, but. Um, then the other question is, there's two prices and, well, four, between the two contractors, there's two different prices on the ceiling tile. Whether we wanna go with just patch a few and have a couple extra ones, or redo the whole under with new. Ceiling tiles, so.
I've worked with washboard and. Then with views of building the old tiles or whatever, then what they use. Are those, uh, like gypsum with the vinyl coating on?
Yes, and that's what he recommended, he said that there was, I got a sample of a different style, but he said that, uh, on this particular style, they put clips on the outside, they'll hold it down if you can tight, and the pieces here are much thinner, so when you push the clips down.
That's another, no, this is another.
That's another option, it's, uh, like plastic with a metal aluminum coating on it, they're a little lighter. But he says they have a tendency to move a little more because clips don't hold that as good, he recommended sticking with gypsum and the coated ones is, yeah. And has expertise to invest in, so. I guess my thoughts, the polyvinyl Rofin and then whatever your take is on. The ceiling tiles, whether we do them all or just some.
It's only else do I like these two, I was a couple. Wait, the, the price difference between replacing all of actually.
No, it's not, no, that's, yeah, cheapest part, the trim part will be it, we'll have to redo the trim because it'll be a different one to do it. There's two angled EFS walls here that'll probably have to come out, those were put in by, uh, Guaranty Bank to. Curve some kids doing damage to some flower pots, I understand, so there's no real need for them to be in there, we'll probably pull them out. There might be a little bit for EFS repair, but do the best we can keep it that way.
Um, the current quote mortgage is thirty seven and I put fifty in the budget limit.
Yeah, I should cover, yeah, we'll see. Just structural issues.
And I, I assume, and I talked to him about it, and I, if we don't have to replace the plywood, we're not just gonna rip it all off, just because we're just gonna prepare the ones, so there may even be. A cost savings that we didn't have to take so much apart too, so. That's what kinda what I'm hoping for, it's what it looks like from the bottom, I'm guessing half of it maybe, the first parts here and there, so.
Brian, do they give a guarantee at all?
They will have, as, um, somebody else will come and inspect the waterproof membrane, because that's where the warranty's gonna come from, is another company, so it'll be somebody besides themselves that will come in. Uh, investigate it and, and look it over to sign off on it before we put the pavers on it, so I guess, I forget if it's fifteen years, I think, at least. If I remember right. And that's their typical procedure, so.
It's a lot of money it stings, but it sounds like there's really no other option on fixing it.
No.
Say it worse.
So we'll throw a pilot by one, replace all of each, uh. Two and ten.
A motion now.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Thank you.
Discussion concerning real world seat dump at Sydney Hall. Yeah. So this is in January, and I'll just remind, lowest bid isn't always the best option maybe. Um, right away, they had to come back, wasn't working. They said. Somebody had disconnected the wire and it goes, they had to tear it apart, any wire, nobody torn it apart, messed with the wire. Then they came back, had to come back again, wasn't working, now, this one, it might have been our fault, there's a. Valve or a water line, and they said it was closed instead of open, and maybe the chairs caused it, I think, Brian, you make a surround for it.
Yes, you built some things that'll protect it longer, so, yeah, that way when they're bringing the chairs and, you know, it's.
So now it's not working again. Um. It came out. And said that, I don't know what happened to that compressor's room. In the unit for this room. And they told me they were gonna get the manufacturer out here. And that they made it so it bypassed it wrong in electrical, and so it's working, yeah, so.
No.
A week ago, not this last weekend, previous, that it was running for the renters. And then last Friday, Tina came up to check the room and wasn't working again. And so the owner came out. And. He told me, oh. Now the other compressor's not working. And he goes, oh, what happened was it got, so the air conditioner needed to stick on, and it didn't know, and so it's. Not them staying on the electrical and got confused and. So I, so we got it working, quarter to five on Friday night for the renters this weekend. And then the workers came out already this week. And worked on it for a whole hours, I think, but the owner didn't know what he was doing. And still no manufacturer, still, it's still not fixed, still don't have parts. It's still running on electric.
So just this room?
Yeah. This, yeah, the.
This equal.
There was three units put in and it was. Let's just get in that.
Remember that time I said geothermal was a bad idea?
You know.
You know who else remembers Pepperidge Farm?
If, if you don't, I, I even said geothermal was always moving. But just giving you an update.
The T V's one is now we're all paying.
You might be to ask over here, Steve. Well, and, um, I was seeing some information about a company that they really don't have a commercial or. Maintenance department, so the guy came out. Was Jake was tremendous. I mean, they're side of their trucks, Dave and Hannah, they're not even cruel employees.
What's the company today?
Cruel, it's the one we got, company that are doing changing tool.
So we didn't help figure it out. Someone else thought you're here to say, I'm not trying to.
They were out there and saw it.
This is yet another thing, but we're finding out now, we can't continue with our holidays.
Yeah.
And can't add any new ones, that let us keep the old ones that they.
Maintain old ones, but you cannot add new ones to the, the line and already see.
That's scrudges.
There's their holes, they go up and down, you shoot the holes and.
They'll have us maintain it.
They should bill us, maintain the existing ones to their tracks, so we can do that.
But at this point in time, we aren't able to add any new. And we. We can put up our own holes.
With, tell us on a message, you don't just ask us.
So with future projects, our church stream, Vanderbilt, as you read in that, think we get your own hole, it's gonna, you know, like, design fire. With that in mind, they have at that point.
I just don't know where. So do you get creative with another way to? That's decorations.
Okay, uh, we can put up our own holes, we don't have to think, so I'm just gonna look like a. I think you figure out how many electricity for, you know, here, or we gotta. You're supposed to be, or you said, you're basically be.
You talk exclusively, or you said it here basically be.
Um.
Excellent holes. It'd be up to the companies, I'm not really sure on that, but the the old ones are not metered.
No, because they, I mean, you'll have a yard light out in front of something, so hey, it's December, it's gonna hit next month.
Power.
Yeah.
They've also like, and they're just trying to get it to a standard, I get that. R E C and even when we talk about why these came out here, they're gonna let us look.
Moving forward, if you don't want to.
And but we will still probably get some of these revamped, who may would say.
Yeah, I don't know what you do, unless you have to go over and lay each other.
Okay, discussion possible motion, control lights and hot hot shoes on. Um this is one we're against because it's come to our attention that when we um. Did the project in the part, we had picked out a specific light. And then at some point during that process.
The electrical engineer.
Electrical engineer told one of the dealers that they could change to a different light.
They proved it as a. So.
As a substitute, we're now cleared by them with us.
So.
So that's what they were moving forward with, and it's a different design than what we picked out.
So the electrical engineer says.
I saw it, when I got one of the Kennedy or light, I would, I still wouldn't say that it analyzed.
And John discovered that, because he thought originally that it had been, that they no longer made that one that we were looking at. But they do make it, here's the problem is, they bid with that one. And the one we wanted, they didn't bid with it, and if you want to go back to that style, there's a price.
Yeah, what was that pricing?
Point six, point six dollars.
So that's why I thought here, because I'm like, oh.
Twenty-six fixtures?
Yeah. For that, I mean, this will, I see that picture a little bit, well, they have the required. We see that in our certain courses, so that that one, that's fifty, that's a little bit of a regular spec.
For the cost increase, if you go with the other design and the extra and. If we have to replace them as we go, we do, you know, just the thought of spending eight thousand dollars.
And that's the one that they.
Substitute, you want a substitute, and if the difference is having that little L shape on the top.
Yeah, so. John didn't have been come in under what we thought it was going to be, right?
Yeah.
How far?
Under our estimate of a budget, I care, I think our estimate was three.
Three twenty-three and a half, and it came out at three twelve.
No, that the came in at three twenty-three. Yeah, oh yeah, right, came in at three twelve, low bid. In our estimate, I thought this.
Three twelve twenty was the bid, and the uh. Engineers estimate was three point three five.
Yeah.
So about ten thousand.
So really, if you put that eight thousand dollars back into the bid, we're right up where we thought we were gonna be anyway.
Yeah.
Right, within a couple thousand.
Yes, why is there only two options, the ballers, I mean, there's dozens of manufacturers, I think. I think, so Joe and Lynn, I think you got to see this one initially. I don't know if they gave you several options to choose from, um. So the big thing up there is the light portion, keep it, yeah, keep it on the trail. Um so this kinda set up, and obviously we want to make it worthwhile, uh like to wait to betray a lot. Um so basically came down to this, it's my understanding, for performance and um. You know, the light pollution requirements up there, so um. So this was originally spec, and Joe and or Lynn uh was of the understanding that this is what they would go with. And yeah, the sales rep called the electrical engineer and they they offered up an alternative that matched the performance. Um and the alternative, that razor baller, there's, I mean, there's. Energy savings with that too, long term, if that's twenty-two watts. Versus fifty-two watts for the pigment, that was originally spec. So the razors were cheaper, and there's long term energy costs that was with them. Now, you know, the appearance and the 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 overhang. Um obviously did not get taken into consideration.
So one thing with the overhang too is, we want them to clear the trail, so that we got pushes back, not really, which was usually that two clearance.
So.
Which pushes even less light on the trail.
A little bit, it's not significant.
Yeah, it's not significant, so that first page is the original spec, we can see there's hardly any light pollution.
On the original?
Yeah, the first. Yeah, and. Um and you see how the, we have. The the calculations to issue or to moving distribution, um. But obviously with this first one too, you can see if you're higher concentration of light right at the fixture, um. And then the razor, which is his second or third stages. We can see that it's late pollution, just because it's that overhang, where it's positioned, you get some spread out the back. Um. Now, if you just look at the coverage on the trail with, they're they're about equal, um. So.
Oh, here's my answer, being in the electrical field. Those LEDs are supposed to last ten, fifteen years, that seems like, oh, you're lucky.
Yeah.
And the the technology changes so much, they're never, you know, except they should come out at some point, unless you rush to pit heads for them. It must be nicer. The older, I mean, the old ones are very difficult, people go out there, change both, they go bad. LED market, they're nice, cost effective, but they don't last. Sometimes you'll have a driver go bad, you replace the driver, but it's more of a bad, you're screwed. There's no rush with things coming, hopefully it's a manufacturer that's around and they can get it durable. Just know that they'll get the issues down with it.
So I did ask the question, and this was Lynn's idea, is if we went with the laser. And the concern of durability, and you know, this type of product, you never know when they're gonna discontinue it. And so I asked, you know, basically if you really wanna make the sale. And the owner of skepticism was using to cut steel on more extra. To to keep on hand as replacements, and it was a hard no, so um. And they did, so the cost with the razor, if you bought four extra. Um it's an additional six thousand bucks. So thirty ballers total, if you went with the razor.
So how much are the up ones that we're paying eight thousand dollars up charge on a piece?
So.
Six thousand for four, for four extra, I think the cost.
I've I've talked to that.
You're getting bent.
So really, really only two thousand dollars.
You'd still be paying, you have four fewer ballers with that one for an extra two thousand bucks.
What I don't understand, if we spent out the linemen, why can't they have provided that?
They can still, but like I said, the electrical engineer gave you okay, and accepted that razor. As we keep growing, so.
Nobody from the city did it.
Right, and that's where.
So who's the electrical engineer for a second?
Is what design was yours.
I don't know.
I'm scared to death, so so this design, you go back to the original ones, doesn't give us any extra. So something grenades, you could just without a light.
Or you get a replacement.
Well, that's, I mean, that's standard with any.
Yeah.
Do the lights down at the complex, you don't get extra unless you.
Maybe what's the option, the LED is already this part, I agree, are too late to change, but you say five, ten years you gotta replace. Most places will work to you, like the manufacturer or, I don't know, use that may actually worry about the light. Well, just replaced the two hundred forty watt ones, a couple months ago, I was already, I must be another issue or a bit.
They call those nice purple lights that are beautiful.
What's another option other than LED that will last more than five, potentially five to ten? And then, I don't know, I haven't put ballers in, it's been a while, so I don't know if you can go with that. Yeah, regular or like a. They used to have complex aggressive, they used to have no highlight.
Well, with without getting too far off of our track right now, the first. Waller that they have suggested, Lynn and I, I think, agreed, we don't like that design. If there's too much uh chance of the kid either sitting on it, standing on it. Hitting it with a bike or whatever, yeah, this one, yeah, because it stands stands out there, so. I, in my mind, I prefer to do the other one before before this one. Even if it is an extra eight thousand dollars, because we're gonna have to spend six thousand dollars to get four extra ones. Sares, in case somebody did bust it. You know, now we're we're only talking two thousand dollar difference to put in a light that we think is safer than the other one. That was still under the size of a couple thousand.
I think the diamond chair should be buying us a couple extra lights.
If it was. They have to do is buy difference, so they have to give us a price for supplying the the one that they bid on this price. And say it was paid a different price, so all some paid, they would have, they would have changed their bid price with yeah. Roughly eight thousand dollars.
Would they sell them?
Yeah, about thirty thousand or thirty thousand dollars.
More than that.
I was marrying, or I mean, my my gut reaction was screw that electrical engineer, they can take that shit, but the reality is. Is the bid, well, they A won't, and B the bid is would have been.
Yeah.
So after, after I simmered down, the reality is, is the bid is sort of eight thousand dollars more. And I agree uh with going paying more to get the ones that have a lesser chance of being. Vandalized, used inappropriate, they sat on, broken it in some manner.
So do we think those ones have at least a five year warranty, so if something does go wrong, we wouldn't have to replace them? And we're not having to replace them?
Yeah, I should say.
Oh man, Chitter and Babe in Palmdale, California.
What do you do with it?
I don't come with.
Lynn, you got any other input other than that? Well, I've heard suggestions, so you guys have it.
I'm fine with going with what I suggested, because the other one, that just you're gonna have more issues just potentially get broken.
Which is why I thought.
No, I'm sorry, they just said on your turtle friendly, I'm like, oh my. I am concerned about turtles, so we should probably spend.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion?
Explosion for the turtle friendly.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Discussion possible motion on someone's house.
So as we do every year, listen to two quotes again for rekeeping the familiar. Well, spelling with. We carry us one forty-five. We do actually, as they say, we've been working today on the old part of.
Yeah, messing up my parking spot, we.
Same in my driveway.
Oh yeah, I mean, no, we do it every year, go with the low bid, motion for that.
All those in favor?
Uh I. One question that please know that we had, sorry, just thinking about something, or if Kleezner doesn't have anything to L appellants.
We, I made sure, we had an issue about three years ago, four years ago. Or there's those little excess, yeah, it was a cheaper route, but they've got a little success, it felt like, what's going on?
You just have to move on, or they show, you need to give them priority areas and then in. Tell them where you want to go, and then you need to have somebody follow behind them and make sure they're doing what they're doing.
Since that year, I had a little problem with.
As long as, because obviously, I love how it's three days, eight hours each.
Yeah.
Kleezer doesn't have an L ticket.
Yeah.
We, we're more money per hour, but we usually, as a rule, they they tell us what to do and how many hours we wanna be there, and we'll get to that point. Say, we're we're there, ready, ready or out, but so, because you can get, you know, you can get a lot of money.
Oh yeah, and they can stall them, they can goof around or whatever, so it's been hurt here. Right, so ever since one year, we've been up there, for the bid wise, they've been the same for probably five, four years.
Nothing? Okay, consider resolution part transfer.
So um during the audit, um they said, well, now that we have a water S R. Um they checked, see, said in the bond document, said that it was supposed to be transferring monthly, well. Uh it's always been okay with the sewer, just what we take in for a sewer debt fee uh satisfies that. But you may recall, uh we're recommending your water debt fee be higher.
I don't recall it.
And so since our water debt fee isn't as high as it should be, then the revenue is sure each month. Uh for what they wanna see for the month will be uh, not now. We have been making that up when we do our debt transfers, you know, in uh November and May, or the payment in December and June. You know, we had enough money to pay the fee, that's not like behind, but they don't wanna see it, do it that way. And they want at the end of June to have uh. July's monthly set aside in the account or at the end of.
So don't you be a month ahead?
Yeah, all times. And I could commit some other ways, because we had like five thousand, I think, at the end of June, twenty-two. They said, well, it should have been eighteen, they said, we want, we made all the payments, you know, you monthly allotment and you're. Need a transfer, and you make payments, and then you don't have anything, because we had five thousand. No, we want you to have them a month ahead, and so um they told us, well, what we'll do is we'll do a transfer this month, that's what I found this out. And um so then the rest of it, just the monthly revenue should end if I. Our revenue, that's the same, and my guesses are, okay, we should have nineteen five left at the end of June. Um and you're just doing your your water transfers now, not in May.
What's easier for you?
Well, I, what I told him was, then come July, your July meeting, you'll do whatever additional amounts. You need for the year for your water debt service, so you'll have a big amount put in in July. And then the monthly settlement, and then the end of uh twenty-four, you'll have what you're supposed to have. Yeah, so we'll just do the water debt transfer until, but this year we're doing it. March, but then the doers. And they were fine with that. And they were fine with that.
Motion to do that.
You will second.
Roll call?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, excuse me, I'm motion, setting a date of public hearing, proposal to engine for general obligationals agreement and to bond their.
So this is for that um G O one that you agreed to for fiscal twenty-four. Um, and so this is setting the hearing date for a year next regularly to start the process. And your members, what are the two projects? Remember what they were.
Water.
Uh, the water tower in. So for a creek. I have, I should know that, but sorry. I had a little. It is the um not to exceed the uh one of the under there means we should reach a. You're just setting the hearing date. I promise I'll have details for you. There's your.
Home days at home, one day, yes.
I just said.
Cycle, roll call please.
Aye.
Time, sir.
Aye. Consider resolution fix the date of public hearing, proposal to insurance for water revenue, loan in this person's name, which is our money. There are other issues for not seeing three hundred and one.
So we're not, I'm recommending you don't take actions. This is that S R F planning, uh zero interest planning and designing loan. Uh, originally, the agenda said three hundred and thirty-three in eight. And um Shane goes, look in your fat, and with a hundred thousand that you added to the project tonight. But three thirty-three certainly wasn't sufficient. He did some quick calculations, we got three seventy-three and then Monday at four. And then today it's not enough, so we're just gonna wait. April eleventh, the same thing will be on your agenda, probably a different.
All right, so we will take no action on that item. Discussion possible motion to a different class, be detailed of a license or dollar general.
So usually uh, since they already have a license, just a renewal would be in the consent agenda. But they're actually changing the the license classification, and so it's a new application, so you actually have to take an individual motion now.
Tom motion. Second.
Allo in favor?
Aye.
Discussion possible motion concerning changes in syllabus, washing schedules. So um, when Matt, um, who came here for contract renewal, brought me the signed um contract extension, he goes, oh. So we're wanting to switch everybody to Thursday. Um, he said, that way you'll be the only town we're doing on Thursday. And if we have to move it because of a holiday, then you're just Friday, you're not, we're not dealing with the weekend or anything. And everything else will stay the same. Okay, yes. And so then thank goodness yesterday they sent a flyer uh because that's what I had on the front page of newsletter. Well, now Jiminda sent this flyer, and so yes, everybody's going for Thursday, and if you're Thursday pickup, nothing is changing at all. But the people who get collected on Friday, wanna pay me that. Um, you're moving to Thursday and they're only gonna do, it's now recycling on recycling week. So the Thursday people will stay in your regular every other week that you are now. The Fridays are going to Thursday, but you'll have recycling pickup on Friday, the last Friday in April. And then again, the first Thursday of May, so you'll have two weeks in a row, so then you get on a different every other week schedule.
Sorry, what?
What the? Yeah.
Budge?
Yeah.
It's just that first.
Yes. Half, yeah. Everybody goes Thursday and half the town will be recycling one week and the other half will be recycled. Next week, you're still every other week.
Recycling is every other week on Thursday. Only half the town, but everybody's garbage is. Wait, wait.
Yeah.
So is yard waste on Thursday?
Yes, all the question. It's just that when it's a recycling week, it's only a recycling for half.
But you still have to buy it, same with the west of Thursday.
Yes.
Just west of it is two.
Yes. So yes, if you're Thursday, nothing's changing.
And is it starting May?
May or, yeah, and when they initially sent this to me yesterday, they're gonna start it in April. I said, oh, no, 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 no. So just for Friday, it's going to change.
That's.
Do you think the motion?
No.
Well, which route is right route?
Yeah, which route?
Yeah, yeah. It's the whole front page.
Yeah. Sometimes I make the middle page in the last.
And then they wanted to mail out those other flyers, and I'm telling you, when Stacy, Tina and I got up, we couldn't even understand them. And we deal with this every day, and I still read it ten o'clock. And I can't.
You don't send them to anybody on Thursday, and they suddenly keep them around.
I should, I should.
Thursday people aren't changing anything.
They don't need to know, they can tell you.
Well, but they don't have access to just the address Thursday, so not. And if I could get, with the darn second page, it has the calendar all written with.
I see, yeah, I do have a question.
Yeah.
Um, she, Kate just pointed this out, unacceptable recycle item ten plus.
Fifteen, correct. I had to scroll down.
So he's. New, it was last night. Or is that an accident?
I don't know.
We should probably find out.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I looked at it.
That has been thrown in the crate for like years.
Yeah, it's not supposed to be.
It goes around.
Yeah, because I just looked at it, and I'm like, shit, there's glass.
Yeah, she just pointed out, like, wait, because that was, how long has that been? Five years?
Yeah.
With the fiber contract, they stopped doing glass because it's a worthless recycle.
Yeah.
But uh, she just noticed glass is definitely a thing.
Well, I will. Now I gotta change.
Because there were some real salty people that. Yeah.
That they.
Well, if you leave Lynn County, you're uh solid waste. Reason was that like ninety percent of it is nationwide is trash through this container.
Yeah. So anyway, so change the symbol, we want to call.
Yeah.
Please.
Motion. Uh, second.
No.
Allo in favor?
Aye.
Discussion opportunity for citizens not on the agenda. Anyone else like to speak about anything?
Last time talk.
Um.
Hey Shay, I was looking at the cut sheets, those lights. The one that was original, I didn't really have anything written, just to type. That one said four thousand Kelvin per color, just to make sure that it makes sure of. They go by color ratings.
Yeah.
I picked the one person to twenty-seven Kelvin, it was just a generic description of uh options. So if your color option, that makes sure of. I'm assuming you want a wider like in the warm light, doesn't matter to you at all.
And it's five years.
That's great.
Okay.
Make sure the color doesn't get to that, the color of the light, it's uh, it's. That's so much the finish, the color of the light.
No.
The light is.
Yeah.
Dan?
So continuing from when I was up here before. I'm good if everyone else is good. It's basically on insert.
For your question on visual, I think you can look at uh comprehensive plan that Fairfax has. Do that planning, someone looks at that every four years, six years, I don't remember the exact dates. That'll give you the visual of future growth on what you don't wear. So if you're referencing to Novak, the ordinances, the zoning is perfect, is is allowed for them to go right there. That's what I sensed, that's what your question was, is why not put something commercial there? It's been empty for a long time, but now that Novak wants to go there, the ordinances are all just fine, but he can go.
That's that's an acceptable answer, I mean, I guess that's that's the.
I think what you're trying, what you're trying to get to is we do, I think P and C were, they were working on um, what we would call.
The overall gate.
Like our gateway, what are like coming down A D intersection here, what do we want that to look like? Do we want to have different storefronts? Do you want to do more um retail as opposed to larger commercial buildings? So they were kind of looking at some of those things.
No cold, no like no cold buildings, having spats, basins.
So they they came to us with some of those things and then we pushed back on, you can't just say no cold buildings anymore in town because that's not realistic. So we need to find a happy medium. So we kind of had some suggestions, and I don't know where we left that. They were.
The suggestions were to split it into two, wanted to have um certain uh facade restrictions along A D street. And I don't remember where it cut exactly, where it stopped close to one fifty-one, but along where our needs develop to have certain restrictions on what is built and the look of the building and then splitting the second district along the current zoning along one fifty-one. Be more aligned with uh the current highway commercial development in the building uh. But that was the task. No, that's what we sent back to them and that is where it's.
Because I went to the P and C meeting when they discussed that and all it was was just going back and sort of back and forth. You know, what type of basins, you know, repair pit moves, you know, those stuff that'll make it aesthetic based. I know with uh me, with uh Shane, no lack of enthusiasm, Chris, and with discussion, that that building, that just doesn't excite.
It'll be nice.
Excuse me.
Yeah, it's way too.
So in your reference to vision, I think my reason to bring that up was the comprehensive plan that will show where the growth in Fairfax, what what types of growth is for those areas.
Good. Appreciate the answer. What do you do?
May's comments, um, so there has. Two or manage, say one, that's all because um, to ensure everything that we have discussed, I had a gentleman agenda, so we'll talk about it with group. Yeah, we do have a special election on May second. So if you're interested in, you have papers in, but who feels a gun? Cause you have to link, yeah, your enters have to be the link by eight o'clock seven. So if you want something in your back seat. And everyone's on the body, I just know. Really, I'm moving to you. I love somebody you have anything?
Just and then after the election, after the votes were certified, that's when we do, there could be sworn in this very story.
The next day, maybe?
No, he was hoping to have it done by the ninth, which is our first council meeting. He wasn't certain whether he'd done. With all of our.
Good lord, it's the only election they have on.
What are they doing?
Well, I think they also said they have to have over, in case someone wants to.
Well, yeah. Well, that is. And then just a reminder that in April and May, there's two dates, April eleventh and twenty-fifth, I think it is, and May ninth, when the votes are the special in April for projects and the special in May is for.
I will not lose words explaining.
Okay, this.
It's for later, we're able to.
Okay.
We'll listen to twenty thirty, get some back in color. As you will. Oh, I'll make it, yeah. I mean, come color hide water, I'll be sure. Yeah, I'll cover.